Good afternoon. Good afternoon. The time is 1:05. The State Board of Education is returning to open session and a quorum of the board is present. The regular board meeting for the State Board of Education is reconvened. Ms. Evans, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are people who have registered to provide public comment today, and I will review the rules. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the board, and I will monitor the time. We will strictly follow the time limit to ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak. Please finish your sentence and conclude your comments when the timer expires. Thank you for your cooperation. It is the practice of the board not to respond to comments during the public participation segment of the meeting. We will maintain an atmosphere of respect for everyone. Anyone who disrespects another person, whether by name or in any other way, will be asked to stop. Public participation will take place both in person and online. We will begin with the individuals physically present today and then move on to those waiting online. First person today is John Grossenbacher. I apologize if I did not say that last name correctly. Please come to the table. Yep, and whenever you are seated, you may begin your three minutes.
Hello, my name is John Grossenbacher. I'm in the State House District 61, focused on parental choice and accountability in education. What's being proposed in the health education standards directly undermines both. This framework strips parents of the option to opt out, a right guaranteed by Michigan law, MCL 380.1507. On pages 14 through 31, they read like a parenting manual, identifying a trusted adult, showing respect, talk about feelings, resolve conflict. These are not academic standards. These are lessons I teach my child at home. Schools are supposed to reinforce values parents teach, not replace them. Through standards, through these standards, there's indoctrination peppered throughout under the label of health. When standards tell children to encourage family members to protect the environment and celebrate personal uniqueness, that's more on lifestyle instructions. Again, my job as a parent. Teaching kids before second grade to correct their parents on recycling isn't health education. It's social conditioning disguised as curriculum. And the biggest problem is page 32. This is where we, it says, "Define gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation." And it teaches that attractions can change over time. Later, page 51, calls for students to foster inclusivity and respect around issues related to gender and sexuality, and to support school policies that promote respect for all gender identities. This is not biology, this is ideology. These lessons promote gender theory and sexual identity discussions that belong in the homes, guided by parents' faith and values, not in classrooms with 11-year-olds. Meanwhile, Michigan ranks as 44th in 4th grade reading and 38th in 8th grade math. Only 39% of our 3rd graders read proficiently, and I just heard today, 25% of 4th graders this year read proficiently. We don't need to teach kids how to analyze gender theory, we need to teach them how to read the textbooks that it's written in. I'm asking you to reject these standards as written and focus on academic parental partnerships. Parents teach values, and the schools should teach skills. Keep boundaries clear, protect parental rights, and let you get Michigan students back to learning what matters most.
Thank you. Next person is Sarah Yocum. Is Sarah Yocum present? Okay. Taryn Gal.
I know that they said they're having problems hearing outside.
Yes. Are you Taryn Gal?
I'm Taryn, yes.
Taryn, very good. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Taryn Gal, and I am a parent of two high school students here in Michigan. I am also someone who has served on two local sex education advisory boards. I have seen firsthand how health education decisions are made in this, in our state, which is with transparency, parent involvement, and community input at every step. I am here today to express my strong support for the adoption of the proposed Michigan health standards. There is a lot of misinformation circulating right now about what these standards are and what they are not. And that misinformation is doing harm, not only to our trust in public education, but to the health and safety of Michigan students. We should not be fearing the adoption of these standards, we should all be fearing what will happen if they are not adopted. Michigan's current health education standards have not been updated since 2007. This means that an entire generation of students has gone through school using outdated guidance that does not reflect what we now know about mental health, technology, vaping, healthy relationships, consent, among many other topics. The 2007 standards are in many ways useless, and useless at best and harmful at worst. The proposed standards are not curriculum, and they are not requirements, they are guidance. They are best-practice recommendations from the Michigan Department of Education grounded in medical accuracy, developmental and age appropriateness, and current research. They simply tell districts, if you choose to teach this topic, here is the most effective and responsible way to do so. And let's be clear, parent rights are not removed under these standards. In fact, in terms of sexual health education, Michigan law guarantees that parents have a voice and a choice in sex education. If a district even chooses to provide sex education, every district must have a sex education advisory board, at least half of which will be parents of students in the district who review and recommend curriculum. And every parent retains the right to opt their child out. These safeguards remain unchanged. There has also been misinformation claiming these standards includes abortion education. Let me be specific, the word "parent" appears 17 times in the standard, the word "family" appears 38 times, and the abortion, and the word abortion appears zero times. These are transparent, evidence-informed standards designed to equip educators and families with up-to-date information, not to impose ideology. Finally, I want to emphasize one component that is especially important to me as both a parent and a public health professional, the inclusion of critical thinking about health information. In a time where misinformation spreads faster than truth, our young people deserve the skills to discern credible sources, evaluate claims, and make informed decisions about their health. Ironically, many of the loudest voices spreading falsehoods about these standards are demonstrating exactly why this education is so essential. These standards empower local communities to decide what works best for them, with perhaps even more flexibility than before, while ensuring every district has access to the latest science, data, and best practices. That's not overreach, that's responsible leadership. And we know the vast majority of parents not only want education aligned with these updated standards, but many assume that their children are already receiving it and are disappointed upon learning that they are not. I urge the board to adopt these health education standards.
Thank you for your comments today. Thank you. Next in the room is Kristin Lee, followed by Cheryl Picard. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Madam Superintendent, members of the board, thank you for your service to the families in our great state. As you know, I'm Kristin Lee from Livonia, serving as the Michigan Education Director for Citizens Defending Freedom. What you may not know is that I too have been a public school teacher in both middle and high school, and my husband is in his 25th year as a public school music teacher. So I really appreciated hearing the students' musical presentations this morning and discussion about the importance of arts and music in our schools. Additionally, all four of our children go to Michigan public schools. Last month, after the new health education standards were presented, I asked you to respect parental rights and the rule of law and to reject the new standards based on the ways they conflict with Michigan law and the recent U.S. Supreme Court decision, Mahmood versus Taylor. Michigan Compiled Law 380.10 states, quote, "Is the natural fundamental right of parents and guardians to determine and direct the care, teaching, and education of their children. The public schools of this state serve the needs of the pupils by cooperating with the pupil's parents and legal guardians to develop the pupil's intellectual capabilities and vocational skills in a safe and positive environment." You know this. These new health standards incorporate and literally weave content, they told us this, the legislator describes as part of sex ed into health class, so let's pretend this is health class, standards, and modernizes sex ed by adding an entire set of beliefs about sexuality and gender to health class. Districts could still offer separate sex ed governed by the local sex ed advisory boards, but why would they? Under these new standards, the content would be covered in the sexual health portion of required health classes. SEBs do not have authority to review health class curriculum, only sex ed class curriculum. In practice, this will effectively remove important safeguards put in by law which require local community input into sexual topics taught at school and which require advance notice and allow parents to opt-out content, sexual content they prefer to be discussed entirely at home. You can't unweave it when it's like this. It's a practical impossibility. You are the governing body, the buck stops here. Do you really want it on your conscience when our students are exposed to sexual topics at school without our consent? Do you want it on your conscience when children who have been sexually victimized had wounds reopened by a well-intended teacher simply following curriculum in line with the state standards you approved? These standards do not provide trauma-informed framework and deny leaving parents the chance to support their children in the most difficult circumstances. Please honor and respect parental authority and rights in Michigan. Don't cut parents out by, of helping our own kids, but cooperate us, cooperate with us, please, by rejecting these health standards which weave sex ed, sex ed into health ed. In their current form, these standards put parents in an adversarial posture with schools. Instead, let's work together to improve health education.
Thank you for your comment today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Cheryl Picard, to be followed by Monica Yatuma.
Got some veggies on there.
Once you're seated and ready to begin, you may begin your three minutes.
Okay, I'm Cheryl Picard, and I'm from Plymouth Canton. I would like to show that there is sex education being involved in this framework. It integrates sex ed, and it also doesn't allow parents to opt out. For instance, too, it also, it expands things and leaves things quite open. On page nine, it says, "Designers of curricula, assessments, and professional development can consider the transferability of these practice, of these practice skills across topics through multiple disciplines beyond those covered in this document." Right there gives so much opportunity and flexibility that parents wouldn't even know what's going on, because a teacher could just put anything anywhere. Also, that makes it even harder. So, and then also on page 32, which is under the 82SH, there's a lot of cognitive dissidence being used there. It says, "Define gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation." And all of that is discussing that as if, if that's what you have to believe, where it doesn't allow students to reject these ideas. Some, some people just reject that ideas, and they have a constitutional right to reject it. But the way it's approached for students, cognitive dissidence is used a lot throughout here, actually, and it just doesn't give you another option. I think that students should, could be classified on here to, to have other options on there, but even the regular sex education, which I've read all through that, uses a lot of cognitive dissidence. I'm also surprised that under these, under this gender identity, that there's no risk factors listed. There's a lot of problems when a child decides to transition with puberty, puberty blockers and surgeries, they produce many health problems and also infertility, which then changes options for kids. The other thing I would like to say is, it also, on page, page 11, it talks about that students know how to, this is under the practices, "Students know how to use health products." And the examples are toothbrushes, adhesive bandages, deodorant, reproductive health products, wearable technology. So, and then it also says, "They also determine the accessibility of products and services that enhance health and are appropriate for their given context or situation." So reproductive health products, they get to show how they use them. So what would those be? That seems very vague, and also allows many decisions to be made upon that. Also, sorry, kind of messy papers. I also wonder, it seems we're very limited on where we get information from when we use the CDC and Shape America. I've looked into all of Shape America, and it seems to be very biased.
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Monica Yatuma, followed by Gary Winok.
She has, she should be put back a couple so that she can get up to the room.
Okay. Gary Winok. Once you have a seat, you may begin your three minutes.
Thank you very much. My name is Gary Winok. I'm the current sitting school board member. And when I heard about this originally, I had certain things I was going to say, but I want to thank this board for adopting and willing to discuss the resolution that's been brought before it. In the Mahmood versus Taylor decision, they have recognized the fact that parents have the right to raise their kids with certain religious beliefs respecting their religious authority. Under social-emotional learning, parents are regarded more as caregivers, which is a new-age religious philosophy which a lot of schools are, are using. So, in the, in the spirit of cooperation, I'm willing to put a lot of things aside, and I'm going to trust you to do the right thing. Our, as a school board member, I got to say, if something comes in that parents don't have the authority to talk about or with, keep their children from because they consider it offensive, I am going to side with those parents. Local school boards need to determine what is appropriate for their areas, not have some local remote board telling us what we need to do. Because you don't have to live with the consequences of it, we do. So, I'm, again, in the spirit of cooperation that I'm seeing being put forth, I'm going to let you make your decision from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandra Carolian, followed by Sandra Tannahill.
You know what, I didn't ask, but this is Monica Yatuma who's before me, so I'll wait.
Thank you. Monica, if you'd like to come to the table, you may begin your three minutes. Right in front of the computer at the end? Yep, yep. And you can have a seat, and you'll begin your three minutes.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Monica Yatuma. So first and foremost, I want to recognize that today marks the very first National Day of Remembrance for Charlie Kirk. Happy birthday in heaven, Charlie. This one's for you. I stand here today to strongly and unequivocally oppose the Michigan Department of Education's proposed revisions to our state's health education standards. While I understand the need to periodically review and update curriculum, what's being proposed today is not a simple update. It's a massive government overreach and a clear violation of both the law and parental trust. Under MCL 380.1507, sex education must be approved by a sex education advisory board, and parents have the right to be notified and to opt their children out of instruction related to sex, sexuality, or reproduction. The proposed health standards framework undermines that law by reclassifying sex education as general health education, making it mandatory for all students K through 12. That is a deliberate attempt to strip parents of their rights, and it's wrong. These proposed standards go far beyond physical health, they cross into deeply personal and spiritual territory, normalizing behaviors that many families find harmful and contrary to their faith. This is not education, it's indoctrination. It's an assault on family values, faith, and the sacred bond between parent and child. Our kids are growing up in a world that already bombards them with confusion. Schools should be a place of clarity and truth, not one, not one more voice adding to the noise. It is not the government's role, and certainly not this department's role, to define who children are or to shape their moral and spiritual values. That role belongs to parents, and ultimately, to God. If these standards are truly outdated, then follow the law. Bring them before the legislature, allow for public input, and ensure transparency and accountability to the voters. At the very least, refocus them on what they're supposed to be about, which is academics and physical health, and keep sensitive content where it belongs. An age-appropriate opt-in sex education classes. Michigan parents deserve to be partners in the education of their children and not sidelined by bureaucrats. Our children deserve schools that teach them truth and not ideology. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you. Sandra Carolian, followed by Sandra Tannahill. Thank you, you may begin your three minutes.
Sex and health education should not be used as a vehicle to promote clearly politically biased viewpoints in tax-funded public education. Why, at a time when Michigan has dropped to number 44 out of 50 states, do we continue the slippery slope of decline by mandating to a diverse community of families the indoctrination of LGBTQ agenda for all students? By law, parents can opt out, but unfortunately, the unkindness and bullying that can occur by refusing mandated courses discourages this. Children whose families encourage a sexualization-free childhood are being forced to battle the very board that is supposed to protect the students by best practices. Obviously, the test scores decline indicates that including these divisive topics detracts from a basic education in core academic subjects. While Board Member Ellen Lipton pointed out the importance of making elective courses available to students, they should not be mandated, especially at the reduction of academic excellence. Jeremiah 6:16 says, "Stand ye in the ways and see, and ask for the old paths; where is the good way? And walk therein, and ye shall find rest for your souls." But they said, "We will not walk therein." Please do not be the board that refuses common sense and insists on indoctrinating rather than educating Michigan students. Leave to the parents the job of guiding their own children, who will leave your care after 12 to 13 years and could become a lifelong burden to their own families and the society at large, as they were deliberately exposed at an early age to unnecessarily dangerous topics that have been historically recognized as a mental illness called gender dysphoria." You board members could be guilty of opening a Pandora's Box by pushing through regulations that conflict with the laws of our country, as warned by Minority Member Nikki Snyder. This should not be a partisan issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandra Tannahill, followed by Cheryl Miles. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Thank you. Good, good afternoon, actually. My name's Sandra Tannahill, I'm a mom of three and a wife. The titles behind my name are irrelevant, being a parent is my priority. Sex, sexuality, gender identity, sexual relationships, same-sex relationships, how my child is sex, and if they're satisfied. Sexually explicit books, opposite sex in sports and bathrooms, et cetera, have become a top priority of discussion in schools instead of reading, writing, and arithmetic, which is why my child, my choice, is in school. Michigan is failing at these subjects and clearly distracted by an intrusion of sex, not by the student's own thought process, but by your introduction, discussion, and reminder of this topic when you decide. Now you're attempting to remove me, the parent, from my equation, from the equation. A no-parental opt-out is not negotiable. Parents to be able to remove, discuss, and opt out of overly sexualized materials is a must. A mandated course that's against most religious beliefs and parental moral compasses would be required to graduate associated with sex is absurd and unconstitutional. You're alienating parents. A typical parent knows the child's teacher as an educator, yet still a stranger. They may be met for a few minutes during a parent-teacher conference, yet you're expecting us to feel comfortable to let them teach and discuss with our children these radical beliefs. Discuss their sexuality and sexual pleasures without our permission as young as kindergarten. I'm depending on the school as a source outside of my home to teach my child to be more productive and educated in life, not be forced, focused even for an hour on whom they're sleeping with and questioning if they feel like they're a boy or a girl. Your job is to fix the problems with their, with their and many in the failing education system, not add to the most controversial sexual subjects while removal of parental input or rejection. Every single year, I'm getting more and more frustrated that I'm sending my child to an already broken school system, not to be educated, but to be influenced by certain individuals' beliefs and misguided delusions instead of concentrating on teaching facts, logic, and critical thinking. Stop introducing confusion and division to these young minds. Whatever your intention or objectives are, they shouldn't, they shouldn't intrude on my child's and family's feelings, knowledge, proven science, and beliefs. You've lost my faith and trust if you decide to push this agenda through. I no longer can depend on the public school system to provide my child basic education. You are failing Michigan's parents and our future generations. I'm not asking you, I'm telling you to make better choices for our kids' education. The advisement of the revised sex courses now named health education standards has heavy radical sexual perversions and possibly being talked without my consent.
Thank you, ma'am. Next is Cheryl Miles, followed by Louis Miles. Once you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Cheryl Miles. I'm a mom of five and a grandma of five. I'm here today because these proposed health education standards go far beyond what any parent, teacher, or community member should accept. Let's stop pretending this is just an update. It's not. It's a complete shift, a rewrite of what we teach our children about who they are and what's right and wrong. We're talking about introducing lessons on sexual orientation, gender identity, and sexual values into required health classes, classes every student must take to graduate. This strips away the opt-out protections guaranteed under MCL 380.1507, protections that give parents a voice and a choice in what their children are taught. And honestly, even the sex education advisory boards aren't a safeguard. We've seen how easily they can be stacked with like-minded people to push through the controversial material anyway. This information doesn't belong in any K through 12 classroom, period. Children simply don't have the mental or emotional capacity to process adult topics about sexuality and gender theory. They are trusting, impressionable, and looking to the adults in their lives for guidance. And that guidance should come from their parents, not from the state, not from activists, and not from the classroom. Our schools should be focused on academics, critical thinking, and preparing kids for life, not confusing them with identity politics or exposing them to ideas that contradict their family's values. This board has a duty to protect children, not experiment on their beliefs. So I'm asking you from the heart, reject these new standards, keep this agenda out of our schools, protect our children's innocent, and give childhood back to them. Our children deserve a childhood free from politics and confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Louis Miles, followed by Maria Bergren. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Louis Miles, and I am deeply concerned about the proposed health education standards framework. Our district is the seventh largest in the state, yet our median proficiency rate is just 38%. We should be focusing on reading, writing, and math, the skills that actually prepare kids for life. Instead, this framework wants to prioritize radical ideological indoctrination, including sexual orientation, gender identity, and sexual values over basic education. Let's be honest, children are not equipped to make decisions about gender. They are still learning who they are, how the world works, and how to navigate life. Pushing these complex ideas on them is not education, it's manipulation. Childhood should be a time of exploration and growth, not a lab for social experiments. In this proposal, under the rationale and updated focus section, it states the goal of, quote, "A clear articulation of social and emotional competencies that can apply across the school curriculum and be integrated into any area of content," end quote. In plain language, this is a plan to push these lessons, not just in health class, but every subject, from math to science to English. This is not education, this is ideological indoctrination disguised as curriculum enhancement. This proposal goes even further, mentioning guiding principles that encourage a whole school, whole community, whole child approach, and emphasize the application of the practices across disciplines, school programming, and coordinated planning. In other words, this isn't limited to a single class, it's a plan to turn the entire school and potentially the whole community into a vehicle for pushing this ideology. Parents have the right to guide their children's moral, social, and educational development. When schools mandate these lessons, that fundamental right is stripped away. Families should decide what is appropriate for their own children, not bureaucrats, policymakers, or special interest groups with an agenda. Education should be about teaching facts and critical thinking, not promoting ideology. These programs often present beliefs as truth, leaving children confused and vulnerable. This is not about supporting students, it's about advancing an agenda, forcing children to forcing children to conform to someone else's worldview. We need to stop treating children as pawns, protect childhood, protect parental rights, focus on the basis that actually matter. Demand education that is factual, age-appropriate, and free from ideological experiments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Maria Bergren, followed by Matt Wilk. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I've spoken to dozens of people over the last week about these health education standards. The overwhelming sentiment is that we do not want public schools to be teaching our children about sex education, gender ideology, or sexual expressions. We, as parents, want to do that ourselves. We ask you, we ask that you would stop all Michigan public schools from teaching gender ideology and sex education. I ask that you would seriously rethink your standards. You would recognize that gender ideology is a false narrative, and it is harmful for minors to be engaging in such thought. Gender ideology is causing children to make life-changing decisions when they are very young. It is causing girls to cut off their healthy breasts and thus make it impossible for them to ever breastfeed their babies in the future. It is making boys dress up as girls and be able to enter into women's spaces. This is not healthy. Talking about sixth to eighth graders having sex, as your standards are doing, is not making their lives healthier or happier, it's making them miserable. Please remove all gender ideology from being taught in Michigan public schools. You want to teach your children to be healthy, and so do I. Well, here is the way for them to truly be healthy. The only way to have true health and true joy is to believe in Jesus Christ as your savior. If you are missing that, then you are missing the foundation. Teach them about Jesus Christ, and that is the way to have real health. He is our hope. Finally, I want to share with you about Hans Christian Andersen's fairy tale. It's called "The Emperor's New Clothes." In this children's story, two tailors are acting like they're busily making new clothes for the emperor. They're pretending to weave all day long, and yet there is no fabric there and no clothes are actually being made. The emperor and his friends are scared to speak up because they feel like, oh, maybe I'm the only one who can't actually see it. They continue to praise these tailors for their work. Well, finally, the day has come for the emperor to walk through a parade. He puts on his new clothes. Well, actually, he is completely naked. He is walking through the streets, and again, every person is applauding these beautiful clothes that don't exist because they are scared to speak up. Well, at the end of the story, a little child speaks up and says, "Mom, the emperor has no clothes on." We must all be that child who bravely speaks the truth. Girls cannot become boys, boys cannot become girls. And as adults who are leading and educating children, we need to speak up about the truth and stop being scared to lose our jobs or lose friends. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matt Wilk, followed by Kathy Kubick. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Thank you. Members of the board, I appreciate your time. I'm a parent of two children in the public schools. I'm also a former board member in Northville Public Schools. And I want to tell you, these standards are as bad as the officiating at the last Lions game. This is a blatant attempt to make an end run around Mahmoud. It's blatant. Parents see exactly what is going on here. These topics are being moved from an optional or opt-out subject in sex ed to a mandatory one through the MMC and health. Everyone sees it. You've heard a lot so far, and you will hear more about how these topics should be taught at home, so I won't repeat around that. You'll hear a lot of passionate discussion of that. I come from a different perspective, having sat at the board table. We had a way we would analyze problems by saying, how does this help teachers teach? How does this help students learn? And the moving of this portion to where it's going to be going in health answers none of those in the affirmative. Those are both answered in the negative. Unfortunately, it does the opposite. So what this does is, it puts the teachers in the unfortunate position of trying to come between their parents and the kids, something they do not want. Rank-and-file teachers do not want to have to have this fight that you are going to force them to have. They want to teach their kids fifth-grade health. They don't want to be answering questions from parents, and we always talk about how parents should talk to teachers first, about how, why is this and how is it taught? They do not want that. So you are putting teachers in this position of trying to justify these standards. That's wrong. Secondly, as you all know, the school day is fixed. We have a fixed school day. When you insert something into the school day, something else falls out unless the day gets longer, right? Pretty basic. So when you have a health curriculum and you add this material to it, you have to ask yourself, what is being pushed out? Frankly, our country probably would admit to itself that we are not the healthiest of people. What health lessons are being pushed out by the addition of this material to the curriculum? That's a fascinating question. We're not extending the school day. We're not adding another 30 minutes to test this topic. We're adding something, which means you're automatically subtracting something. Furthermore, as a school board member, I would be really upset about this because what the State Board of Ed is doing is putting my district at severe legal and financial risk. You know this fight is coming. The Supreme Court has made that very clear. In Mahmoud versus Taylor, the topic was taught in English, not in anything in sex ed. And the court ruled, it didn't matter whether it was in English or anywhere else, an opt-out had to be allowed. So you're forcing this fight down to the school districts that's putting them at legal, financial risk. Finally, this exacerbates enrollment declines. Parents are going to make the choice to do something else if these standards stay in there. I thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Next is Kathy Kubick, followed by Rana Salem. Once you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
I don't have a speech. I have comments. I worked for the schools for 26 years, and I, kids want discipline, they want rules. The changes, there don't need to be changes, I do not believe. And I don't know why you go by a current study, boys are boys, girls are girls, kids are kids. They want to be listened to. They want to be loved. And I loved when I was in education. It was fabulous. And you made a statement that parents are always informed when they're, that is not true. The district I was in, I fought, after I retired, I wanted to find out when. They skipped that year. They forgot to let the parents know about it. That's okay. So you don't always know. You may think you know what's going on in the schools, but you are not. Unless you're there, you know it. And about the, the, the school district has gone down so far with 44, we're 44th in reading, we're really low in math. Common Core came in when I was teaching. What a joke. That's one of the reasons I had to get out. And I heard on TV that Mississippi was, 25 years ago, was 50th in reading. They are now number one because of phonics. They brought phonics back after 25 years to do that. We have hope, guys. We could change in Michigan. We could get better. And I don't like it that this is a more Democrat-Republican issue. It shouldn't be that. It should be what's best for the children, the education in Michigan. And I don't like it that we are split two to six. So I'm afraid, because of the numbers, two to six in this, on this board, that you're going to go with whatever the lefties say. Please don't. Please think of the kids. Think of the state. Let's fix the state. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next is Rana Salem, followed by Sharda Brockman. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hello. I want to start by talking about the science. There is extremely limited research on the short and long-term physical and psychological impact of gender exploration between the ages of 11 and 14 years old, as proposed in the health standards framework. Most existing studies are actually focused on gender-affirming care, but that is not the same as exploration. Gender exploration refers to encouraging youth to question or reconsider their gender identity, while gender affirmation refers to socially or medically supporting a chosen identity through actions or interventions. Even that limited research focuses on people who have already made major gender-related decisions and severely struggled afterwards, meaning it studies treatment, not prevention, and also proves that there's something to treat. That is the actual science. Let me give you an example of what happens when ideas move forward before the science is ready. In the early 1900s, doctors believed separating newborns from their mothers after birth was best. Their intentions were good. They thought it allowed mothers to rest while nurses cared for the new baby. After several decades of this practice, researchers like Renee Spitz and John Bowlby found that separated babies became withdrawn, lost weight, stopped smiling, caused affectionless psychopathy, anxiety, social maladjustment, and even death. I am not equating the two issues, but I am illustrating how really good intentions are not the same as good science. You are in a very similar position today. There is almost no science to back this standard. I spent this point of the whole standard, sorry. I spent hours and hours and days searching and searching for research. I, what if these children explore their gender simply because the idea is presented? You don't know what will happen because there's no science. There is science that shows hormone medication directly alters brain chemistry, directly impacts neurotransmitters. Can you confidently tell me that every 11-year-old can make that kind of decision safely? Many detransitioners will tell you that mistakes have been made in the past. It is extremely dangerous to conduct psychological experiments on children, and since the science isn't settled, that's what this is. Under the U.S. Constitution, public schools must remain secular. They cannot promote or oppose belief systems unless the science is settled and the science is not settled. That makes this section of the framework constitutionally questionable. It also opposes the religious beliefs of the majority of Michigan citizens. Third, this topic is politically divisive, as you can clearly see by the presence here. Now you have three major conflicts, scientific, legal, and politically partisan. This will turn local school districts into battlegrounds when it could be settled right here. This one issue makes up 1/20th of a percent of K-12 academics. That means local districts will be overwhelmed spending their time with the community on this one subtopic, rather than 99.95%
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you. Next is Sharda Brockman, followed by Tim Totten. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
On behalf of the Michigan Organization on Adolescent Sexual Health, or MOASH, we are writing to express our strong support for the newly proposed Michigan Health Education Standards Framework. These standards represent a critical and long overdue update. Michigan's health education standards have not been revised since 2007. We commend the Michigan Department of Education for developing comprehensive, evidence-based, and age-appropriate standards that reflect the needs of today's students. We are particularly supportive of the emphasis on mental and emotional health, safety, healthy relationships, and sexual health. At a time when access to health education, especially sexual health education, is being restricted in many states, we are grateful that Michigan has stayed committed to ensuring that best practice health education can be provided to our young people. The newly proposed health education standards stay true to this commitment and in line with state and federal law. While we understand that the draft standards will be revised based on feedback from stakeholders, we urge the State Board of Education to ensure the final framework remains as comprehensive and inclusive as possible. The state's role should be to provide the full range of evidence-based, age-appropriate options so that local districts can select what best meets the needs of their students and communities. Limiting or removing topics at the state level simply because some find them controversial or politically charged undermines local control and denies districts the flexibility to provide instruction that reflects their population data and community values. As the state's leading organization dedicated to advancing adolescent sexual health through youth voice, education, collaboration, and advocacy, MOASH partners with schools, youth, parents, and health professionals across the state of Michigan to ensure that all young people have access to inclusive, medically accurate, and developmentally appropriate health education. The proposed standards align closely with MOASH's mission to ensure opportunity for young people in Michigan to access health education as well as overall well-being amongst youth. In particular, we applaud the standard's skill-based approach, the movement of healthy relationships from sexual health education to its own category, and the addition of media literacy as a component of health and well-being. Michigan has the existing infrastructure to provide health educators with the necessary professional development to deliver updated standards with fidelity and confidence, ensuring consistency and quality. These updated standards will equip Michigan students with the knowledge and skills to make informed decisions, especially healthy behaviors, and thrive both in and outside of the classroom.
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you. Next in the room is Tim Totten, followed by Catherine Bussard.
Hi, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board. I am Tim Totten, parent of school-aged children in resident of Grand Ledge. I urge you to reject the proposed health education standards put out by your activists. The radical sexual ideology in the proposed health standards are based on pretense, exaggeration, lies, and nonsense from queer theory that is not based on any science at all. It is, it is made out of thin air from postmodern thought. These standards are so egregious that they cannot face the light of day, that being democratic scrutiny under legislative authority, the disapproval of 80% of the bipartisan population. I urge you to reject the proposed health education standards. The proposed standards teach and train children, mine included, to be radical gender ideology allies, much like Islamic madrassas teach their children to hate Jews and Christians. This obviously violates First Amendment religious liberty rights. It is no excuse for you to say that my recourse is to pull my children out of public school for me holding to my firmly-held religious beliefs and values, as the U.S. Supreme Court has recently ruled that that proclamation does not relieve you from the responsibility of not putting religiously objectionable things towards my child. I also object to the forced radical gender ideology in the standards, and it is against my firmly-held religious beliefs. I urge you to reject the proposed health education standards put together under a retired old man.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Bussard, followed by Linda Newman. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Thank you. My name is Catherine Bussard, Executive Director and COO of Salt and Lake Global, and a member of my local public school board. Today, I speak in my personal capacity, and I urge you to reject the proposed health education standards framework. In order for a governing body to uphold constitutional good governance, they must pass two basic tests before taking action. The first is simple. Is there a constitutional lawful power source authorizing this body to take action? While the legislature has designated some authority in this matter, they have also set limits on how that authority is exercised by clearly distinguishing what is health education and what subject matter constitutes a separate academic course, such as sex education. Health education is mandatory for K-12 compulsory public education, allows no provision for parental notice or general opt-out, and covers things like CPR, first aid, hygiene, nutrition, and other similar topics. Sex education, however, is completely optional, whether or not districts teach it. Parents must receive notice and opt-out before it can be taught. Curriculum is developed by the local sex ed advisory board and covers topics specific to human sexuality. These are different subjects altogether. Health education is simply not the same as sex ed, and it should not be interwoven into the same standards. The proposed standards overlook the boundaries clearly set by legislative statute and wrongly embed sex education into health education without any provision for parental notice and without any provision for parental opt-out. So this brings us to the second test of good governance. Does the proposed government action have potential to infringe on anyone's civil rights? The answer in this case is clearly yes. And when that answer is yes, action should not be taken. And when that answer is yes, action should not be taken. When subject matter from sex ed is moved into health ed in the manner proposed by these standards, important civil rights protections are lost, particularly pertaining to parental rights and religious liberty. Standard 5.3 SH mandates teaching sexual reproduction to children in third grade, meaning eight- or nine-year-olds. Many children there simply aren't ready developmentally for this, but parents are not noticed nor do they have the right to opt-out. In standard 8.2 SH, it targets children as young as sixth grade with values that are radically different than many sincerely-held religious beliefs of their families. Adding insult to injury, these standards are not supported by science. They promote dangerous and unhealthy behavior, and they even compel teachers, even those of Abrahamic faith, to speak against their sincerely-held religious beliefs. This creates multiple First Amendment concerns. Standard 12.6 and CEH also pushes the envelope even further, training children to become activists and advocates for these very radical gender ideas. These standards are harmful, not healthy, for Michigan children, and they undermine the First Amendment civil liberties that many Michigan families treasure. They do not pass muster as legitimate good governance and therefore should be rejected. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Linda Newman, followed by Sheila Kohun. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes. We'll come pass it out. Go ahead and have a seat and start, and we'll come pass it out for you. Yep. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. My name is Linda Newman. I'm a mother, I'm a grandmother. I'm from Charlotte, Michigan, just a little small town south of here. I'm not sure if you're familiar. I'm urging you to reject this proposal. I have two decades' worth of emergency medical experience. I've been on ambulances, I've worked in emergency rooms, I've taught adults to be paramedics. Nowhere in that was any gender-affirming anything. That is not healthcare. That is politics. What I'm sending around here, I'm not going to cover what's been covered so well before this. This is a recent survey by Pew showing that the majority of teachers agree they do not want to teach the subject matter. It shows that adults, that are voting adults, the vast majority of them, do not want this taught in schools. I just urge us to get away from politics. Let's get back to the science. Let's get back to what's important for the kids. And again, I'm just urging you to please, please reject this. Thank you.
Next is Sheila Kohun, to be followed by Kristen Carson. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Good afternoon, board. I'm here in person this time. I didn't call in, not this time. This is too important. All of these parents showed up today. They all got better stuff to do than sit here in front of you guys and do this. But it's way too important, way too important. They have jobs to be at, but it's way too important. Because you know what? Their kids are involved in this. Their children, not yours, theirs. Why is my son's sex and gender any of your concern whatsoever? It's not. It's not your concern. You were not in the delivery room when I had my child. You have not been there when my son got diagnosed with a genetic condition. You didn't go through all the therapies my son had to go through? Nope, I did. I get to make those choices. How many bonds have failed around the state in every school district? Quite a few. You know why? Because of what you guys are doing right now with all of this nonsense with gender. They keep failing because parents keep pulling their kids out of the public school system, like me. I pulled my son back in 2020 because of COVID and the nonsense that everybody decided to do, the government officials, and this board decided to do in the schools. And oh my goodness, those guidelines actually came out to be false. Six feet social distancing was actually a lie. And yet, this board continued to follow it and push that on our kids and divide them continually. And yet, we're supposed to believe that passing this gender crap is supposed to do any good for the kids when you actually harmed the kids back in 2020. How can we even trust you? And in the board documentation for the health updates, you talked about bullying. Yet, I constantly see, constantly through COVID, and even now, see a certain board member bullying other board members when they actually stood up and spoke against the COVID guidelines. And they were right. They were right. So you want to keep losing kids in the public school system? Pass it. You will have a mass exodus that you have never seen before. You want to be successful as a public school system? Look at other public school systems that are successful, that are actually having great success with all of the kids. Keep your politics out of my kids' mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kristen Carson, followed by Sue Nottingham. Whenever you're ready, you may begin.
Hi, my name is Kristen Carson, and I have five children, two of which are still in the public school system. I want to start by reading the beginning of the Declaration of Independence. Maybe some of you need a refresher. "When in this course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve political bands which have connected them with another and to assume among the powers of the earth the separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of natures God entitled them, a decent respect of the opinions of mankind requires that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal; they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their powers from the consent of the governed; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness." Our children are bestowed upon us by our Creator only for a short time, and it is our job as parents to raise our children with the moral compass that we see fit, not the government's responsibility. And with that being said, it's come to my attention that we already have a large influx of IEPs and 504 plans. Teachers claim to not be equipped to handle such student bodies because they don't teach special education. I would agree, they aren't trained in special education, but let's ask why the influx. Parents are dissatisfied with the lack of learning of their child and believe that an IEP is the only option. It's not always the children's fault, in my opinion. At this time, only 24% of Michigan's fourth-grade students can read at grade level. That's horrible. That's a deplorable statistic. With that being said, why does this board want to push gender ideology and social-emotional learning, further dividing parents from their children? Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sue Nottingham, followed by Al Craven. Thank you. When you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
My name is Sue Nottingham. I began my teaching career in 1973. I may be the oldest person in this room. It's a little uncomfortable for me. When I started teaching, you could not be visibly pregnant and continue in the classroom. In 1974, you could come back. Roe v. Wade had just been passed, and Title IX was just around the corner. I've seen a few changes. I taught for 31 years in family and consumer science, and in 1964, I navigated the requirements for comprehensive health education in Michigan as a teacher, a trainer in health and sexuality, and a sex ed supervisor in my district of Waterford. I delivered HIV AIDS trainings to hundreds of teachers in Michigan. I was a faculty member at Central Michigan for 15 years and was in teacher prep for health education, and I was an adjunct for a century at Wayne State. My career has been immersed in comprehensive health education. A common barrier to health education has always been sex ed. One of the changes that happened is that the only required courses were civics and physical education. And when those required courses became health, that's when this changed. The framework had sex ed in health education, but many districts chose either not to teach it or put it in a totally separate class. That's still an option. It hasn't really changed. District advisory committees have to be made up of at least 50% of parents. They have to include clergy, students, teachers. I mean, it's really designed very well. And each school determines what their program will include. The teachers must be trained and certified in health education. Sexuality is part of that. Parents have a right to be informed that their child is participating. They have a right to review materials, come in and see those materials. They are allowed to observe their child being taught. And they can remove their child without penalty. It's an easy out. These requirements are safeguarding parents who believe their child is not ready for the materials, and they believe their program doesn't meet their family values. AIDS education is required, but not sex ed. Health is required, but not sex ed. Districts have to provide comprehensive education, and they have the guidelines to do that. And they can choose to put the sex ed, and always, parents have a right to remove. Please don't allow a 4% of the individuals to postpone this valuable decision.
Thank you for your comment today.
Thanks very much.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
My name is Al Craven. I live in Stockbridge. I am a retired educator. I spent 45 years as a teacher, administrator, coordinator, consultant, professor, as well as working in educational television, all specializing in health education. I've helped school districts all of the United States and Canada develop their health curriculum and train teachers and nurses. I've presented at state, provincial, national, international, and world conferences. There's lots I could say today, but I only have three minutes. So I've chosen to tell you a short story, a true story. Years ago, I was teaching a puberty class, all boys. When the topic of nocturnal emission came up, I explained to the boys that it's normal, natural. They weren't sick, they'd done nothing wrong. After class, a boy came up to me and said, "Sir, thanks for telling me that. I thought there was something the matter with me. I thought there was something the matter with me." Wow. As a teacher, I thought, yes, I helped somebody. It was great. Years later, I'm training teachers at the Oakland ISD, elementary teachers. And I tell that story. And a teacher says to me, "Al, I've got one even more powerful. Please share it." Again, he explains to his class that nocturnal emission, normal, natural, you're not sick, you're not evil, you didn't do anything wrong. And a boy says to him, "I thought I had cancer. I thought I had cancer." 10 years old. We are the most intelligent, sophisticated, technologically advanced society in the history of the world, and we seem unable or unwilling to help our young people with their growth and development. How many of your children, how many of your grandchildren right now are experiencing anxiety, are worried? Maybe they've done something wrong. Maybe they have cancer because they're going through some puberty changes that nobody's talked to them about. I strongly encourage you to pass these guidelines. Because when you pass these guidelines, it will help to form a bond, a partnership with the schools and the parents to develop functional knowledge, teach skills, provide resources that will help these children grow and become healthy young adults. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, board, it is 2:09. We've been listening to public comment for an hour. The board's bylaws state that the public participation segment of a meeting shall be limited to one hour, but may be extended if the board chooses. We entertain a motion on how to handle the rest of the comments. Ms. Evans, do you know how many more we have?
We have 16 in person and at least 30 in the queue online.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
Yes, I move to extend public comment until we hear everybody.
All right, discussion.
I have a friendly amendment. If we can extend it, but we get through the agenda and come back and stay here for the public comment.
I mean, you guys have done this in the past. These people drove here, they've got places to be. You know, I mean, we need to hear from them now.
Ms. Snyder.
My mic is on. Is that what you're looking for?
No, no, no. Thanks for checking.
We are in service to the public. They are here to speak. It is our responsibility to listen.
All right, so there's a motion to extend it currently for until everyone has had a chance.
So is that everyone here in person?
Everyone registered.
I want everybody registered. Here and online.
Senator Bullock has the floor.
So the statement was, they drove here, but the folks online didn't drive anywhere. So I would like to put a time limit on it. We can extend it an hour, and those that we hear for in that hour, we go back to the agenda and then take President Pew's position to put it on the back end.
Thank you, Senator. Dr. Pew.
Well, my question would be, how much time would that be? Because I know we have board members who have to leave at a certain time, so that is why we're asking. And all of us here understand the importance of hearing from the public and want to hear from the public.
So we've heard 23 people, so that leaves 64 left.
How many in person? How long?
Person is 42 minus 24, so 16.
And how much longer would it be?
16 times 3 is 30, 48 minutes.
And then 30 after that, 30 in person, or 30 remotely.
Sorry, Ms. Snyder. So the notion here is that Mr. McMillan's motion is that we extend it. A friendly amendment to that from Senator Bullock is that we only extend it four people here, since it will be 48 minutes.
Because the maker doesn't support it, so it's not friendly.
Okay, so Mr. McMillan does not support that? We will go for the vote, yes? Ms. Snyder?
We go for the vote. There are many people who probably are commenting remotely that didn't think that they would be disregarded in such a fashion. So maybe they had been able to show up in person if they knew this was going to happen. So we think we're doing the right thing. We're not doing the right thing. We may not... This is not how governing well works.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
To note that the bylaws do contemplate not only shortening the length of public comment, but also shortening the length of the amount of time that each person has, particularly if the comments are potentially duplicative of what has already happened, to either one to two minutes. And so I would just add that to the mix in terms of possibilities for handling larger amounts of public comment. This board does have the opportunity, per the bylaws, that were voted on before I got here, but are still in place, as far as I know. And I suspect that we should adhere to that in terms of how we govern ourselves. And it does speak about the ability... And it does speak about the ability of this body to move public comment to different parts of the agenda so that we can do the business of what the published agenda requires of us to do, as well as managing larger volumes of public comment, as I said again, by shortening the amount so that everyone has a chance to be heard. But we do have the ability to designate for how long they can be heard, particularly in the event of duplicative amounts.
May I follow up to that?
Ms. Snyder.
Dr. Pugh.
We have items that we plan to vote on and we have a board member, at least one board member, who has to leave. So again, everyone at this board table understands the importance of the voice of the public. We also understand our bylaws, at least some of us do. And so that is why I propose that we go back to the agenda and come back for public comment.
Can we listen to them at least?
Sorry, sorry. No, 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 no. Hello.
You did not accept a friendly amendment. Stop playing games.
One moment, Ms. Snyder. So those of you in the audience, we ask that you not make comments at this time. All right. Right here. Mr. McMillan, I didn't call on you yet. Ms. Snyder has the floor.
Under the assumption that the majority of this board would only give who's in person the ability to finish the comment out and then disregard the remote comments, which are 30 people who have registered, maybe taken work off, would also like to speak. And they may not be available to speak later when we are ready to pick them back up, right? I would make a friendly amendment to Tom.
At least allow them.
That, that we allow everybody to speak for at least a minute, two minutes, so that everybody can do their public comment, that we don't miss people. I'm just suggesting that be also be an option instead of taking a break and returning to and losing the 30 people that are remote and trying to comment, so that everybody has a voice and the ability to do it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Bullock, before we get to you.
Just a clarity, mine was an hour. My, my amendment was an hour. Add 60 minutes. Get who you can get in and then the remainder to the back end.
Wait a minute, Mr. McMillan. Are you done, Senator Bullock?
Yes.
Yes, Mr., okay. So what you will accept.
60 minutes to listen to the, everybody for three minutes here.
So let me be clear. You are willing to say that with your motion to go 60 minutes, that the participants have one to two minutes?
No, no, three minutes.
Everybody would get to speak. The 16 people here and the 30 remotely.
Yeah, I mean, I think we keep going with the three minutes if people are here.
But you wouldn't get to everyone.
The bylaws read that it can't be reduced to anything less than three minutes.
We've done that before. Dr. Rice has done that before.
Not since my coming. It says we're here, but in no instance shall the time provided be reduced to less than three minutes.
He has done that before where everybody.
If the board is willing.
I mean, we can go and accept, I mean, look, I'd like to do it all now, but I don't want these people going home without speaking for three minutes. So I'm accepting his.
You're accepting one hour, but what about the notion of one to two minutes?
I think they should have three.
They have to get everybody.
We can't go below three.
What if? Okay.
It's my turn. We can't go below three. And we have a board member who has to leave. And we have a resolution that is being discussed that we will not get to before that board member has to leave. So.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pugh. So we have a motion on the table. We have a second. Ms. Evans.
Friendly amendment?
Yes.
Has the secondor?
I, I am going to say it one more time. If we have 16 people in person.
I apologize for that.
18, they get three minutes. That's 54 minutes. We could still do an extra 30 minutes and give everybody remotely one minute at your permission. We've done this before. We could do it. And then we could still have that person, that board member, leave on time and still get to the rest of our agenda. I do not recommend that this board do something in a fashion that takes the 30 people who have taken the time out of their day, potentially taken their work off, to call in and comment to disregard them. And we don't have to.
I understand that part. But the board has, your board bylaws allow for one hour public comment. It did, regardless of the number of people here. Let, Mr. McMillan, I listen to you. Mr. McMillan. Please let me finish. So, and it also allows for moving or an extension of the public participation. Mr. McMillan has a motion on the floor to extend it for another hour. Is that correct, Mr. McMillan?
I've accepted this, yeah.
There's no second on your, on the amendment. So is there a second on the amendment?
It was friendly, so the secondor just has to accept that.
You accept that?
I'm making a friendly amendment to that to add the remote comment for a minute each. That means we would extend it for the 54 minutes we need for three minutes each here and one minute per person for 30 that have called in. That is my friendly amendment. And I have not taken it off the table and I'm not going to. Sorry, I have a clarification to the amendment and the friendly amendment.
Yes, yes.
Friendlier amendment. And that is, at what point in the agenda are we talking about? Are we talking about that hour being extended now, which would then move everything back on the agenda that we approved, including timeframes?
Yes.
I mean, we did all approve this agenda and unless, there's something wrong with my eyes, they all actually have time goals, et cetera. Are we talking about the hour extension being done now or being done at another point in the agenda?
The motion is to have the extension now.
At, from 2:25 to 3:25. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
Two clarifications and, and putting fact on the table. This has happened before where we were, we had, I don't know how many, public commenters, but we had to extend it after we finished the agenda items. So this is not the first time that we've been here.
We listen to everybody here.
In addition, Mr. McMillan. Mr. McMillan. In addition, in addition.
No.
In addition.
Excuse me. Point of order comes when you are called on, not when you interrupt. Ms. Dr. Pugh.
What's in the bylaws, in addition to being able to extend or reconfigure, place the public comment someplace else in the agenda, is the five minutes to three minutes. We cannot go below that. My third point is I would love to hear from the board member who has to leave early to even be able to tell us whether or not this accommodates their schedule. And we've been talking long enough now that we've now skipped item G. I mean, we're, we're at the end of item G, that time allotted for that.
All right, any, any more discussion on the motion?
Quick clarity, does, does he have to restate the motion in addition to asking to move the agenda back?
We just have to make a decision. That would, that would, that would help me determine voting because to me, just adding an hour is different than adding an hour here versus adding an hour there.
Yeah.
So I, I'm unclear.
The motion has to be stated to add the hour here and adjust the remainder of the agenda accordingly.
Which we could do. We could table other things on the agenda.
Excuse me. Dr. Pritchett.
I'm the culprit. Who needs to leave at 5 o'clock. So, you know, you're still going to have quorum if I leave. There's no question about it. But obviously, it would be more efficient probably if I were here only to add to the discussion if we get to that point. I too honor the individuals who have taken time out of their day to be here. And I understand there are people in the queue who want to share with us also. And it's important that the board hear them. So I think what I'm hearing is there's a motion on the floor, I believe, or friendly amendment, that we go for an hour to hear these individuals for three minutes. And I believe Nikki's suggestion of then letting the people on the phone, if they're still able to be on the phone, to go one minute or one and a half minutes and add to whatever we haven't heard already. That would get us where we need to be. And hopefully then, if we can be efficient with the rest of the board agenda, I'll still be able to participate.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Ms. Snyder, where are you next?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Snyder. Dr. Pugh.
I would say call the vote, but I don't know what the vote is because I don't think that the secondor supported the friendly, agreed with the friendly amendment.
Judy just described exactly what the vote is.
He has to restate the motion.
My friendly amendment to Tom's. If you, if you accept.
A secondor can make a friendly.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. McMillan, thank you.
I don't know what it is.
Dr. Pugh.
A friendly amendment. We'll have to change the bylaws when it comes time to cutting it to one, but we can do that with the majority, with the super majority, I think.
All right, so Mr. McMillan, would you like to state your motion again?
Goodness, it sounds like we're going to go and listen to everybody who's here for three minutes and then listen to everybody in the queue for one minute each, which would require a change of the.
The bylaws contemplate voting to set aside the bylaws, I believe.
We've done it before. Could that accept?
And, and just since I have the floor, I mean, we have extend, when last time, the times we've had these issues, we've extended it and heard everybody that was, that drove here. That, there's, we've never not done that. All in one and not forced them to stay here for hours afterwards. And then it was the phone calls that we put at the back, which I don't like, but if it was the, if that's the only way to listen to the people here, I would entertain that. But if we're good with this 30 seconds or one minute, then we can do that.
Any more discussion before we go to the vote? Dr. Pugh.
Just so we're clear, when the first friendly amendment was made, probably about 30 minutes ago, or the second friendly amendment, we were with that. So I just don't know where we are. And that was to extend an hour so that all the people in the room, we could hear from them, go back to the agenda, and then come back to the callers.
And I guess if this fails, we can do that. We can vote on that.
Ready for the vote, Ms. Evans. Bullock.
What are we voting on?
Right? What are we?
It's extending.
For, to hear everybody for three, three minutes and then hear everybody online, which probably isn't 30 still, but for, for one minute.
An hour at this point.
Starting right now.
Starting right now.
I have another question. Do you have to vote to set aside the bylaws in order to do that first? So.
The chair can make that.
Here, here is my recommendation.
In my motion, I could make it and set aside the bylaws to, to do the one minute on the phone. That could be part of the motion.
Yes, yes, yes.
As long as it's the super majority.
Violation of Open Meetings Act by not providing everyone the same opportunity.
With one minute versus three.
That would be my question and concern.
I don't think so. We get to set our bylaws. I, I would recommend.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Lipton. Mr. McMillan. We're to the board. I recommend that you do your three minutes for the people who are here. We stop, see how many we have on the line, make another motion on how we're going to handle the, the remaining.
We can explore what we need to.
Okay. Do you want to make that friendly amendment?
Yes.
I'll accept the friendly amendment that we do three minutes to get the people here. I mean, extend it so that we hear everybody for three minutes and then we make a decision after that.
I haven't accepted that. We're going to vote on, on getting everybody remotely to be able to comment first.
On the table, that's the original vote.
That's on the table. We're going to vote on that first.
So the original motion is to extend it to hear everybody here and also those on line. The time of one to two is now. No, no.
I'm concerned that there's a violation of.
No.
Okay, ready for the vote? Does everyone, is everyone clear on the motion? These and on the call, three minutes. So the motion is, listen to ones here and on the call now.
Or a minute on the call.
Put a timeline, time limit because we don't know that yet. Okay?
So that everybody can speak.
Roll call, up, through the chair.
Through the chair.
Yes, Dr. Pugh.
I will be voting no on that, but I would like for us to quickly come back to the, to the next. Got it. Okay, Ms. Evans, call the vote.
Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
Pugh?
No.
Robinson?
No.
Snyder?
Yes.
Motion fails.
I make a motion to just do the people here for three minutes and then we make a decision after that.
Is there a support?
Some support.
Dr. Pugh, any discussion? Thank you.
Ms. Evans. Yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
And Snyder.
Pass.
All right. Ms. Evans, will you call the next person?
Carrie Southern. And after Carrie is Alicia Childers. Is Carrie Southern here? Okay. Okay. Alicia Childers. And after Alicia is Billy Schultz. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Alicia Childers and I am here as a mother, a taxpayer,
My name is Alicia Childers and I am here as a mother, taxpayer, and a voice of Macomb County parents as the Moms for Liberty Chapter Chair. Among many other titles, I was a teen mom that was failed by a brainwashed health system that was supposed to give all of the ideas and all of the recommendations and all of the possibilities for parents. Today, I am calling upon you, our elected State Board of Education members, to reject the proposed health standards. Let's be clear, this is not about health. These proposed health standards are an attempt to weave sexual ideology into a required class bypassing Michigan law MCL 380 dot 1507. Meanwhile, MCL 380 dot 1170, 380 dot 1170 A and B establish clear and distinct curriculum guidelines for health education. And MCL 380 dot 1502, 380 dot 1278 A and B mandate participation in health education, which clearly separates health education, a required course, from sex education and opt-in program. Michigan law requires that sex education be locally governed and through advisory boards must include parents, clergy, and community members. By embedding sexual content into mandatory health curriculum, you are removing the need for our lawful oversight and forcing radical content into a class parents simply cannot opt out of. This is a direct violation of both law and trust and a complete, complete abuse of authority over Michigan families, the ones you all serve. You are not improving education, which, mind you, we can't make the top 40 out of 50 in education. Rather, you are choosing to focus on removing parental rights and replacing them with ideology. The framework promotes lessons on gender ideology, sexual identity, and even normalizes abortion as reproductive health. It teaches children to question truth and biology, to become activists for relative truth instead of developing critical thinking skills that lead to informed, confident students. This is not health, this is indoctrination. Our schools are already overwhelmed trying to meet current standards. Now you want to burden local districts even further while silencing parents who dare to speak up? This is not progress, this is, in fact, oppression. Our children deserve protection, not politicization. Parents are the moral authority in their children's lives, not the state. Do not tamper with the innocence of our children and the sacred right of parents to guide them according to their faith, values, and beliefs. With that, let us not forget that the recent Supreme Court, Mahmud versus Taylor, reaffirming that the parental rights are fundamental and constitutionally protected. We, as leaders, have the moral responsibility to protect our children and preserve the integrity of the education system. On behalf of parents, communities, and children who cannot yet speak for themselves, I am calling on all of you, reject and withdraw these proposed health standards. They are harmful to children, harmful to families, and harmful to our freedom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Billy Schultz. And after Billy is Linda Wright. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Billy Schultz and I am a parent of a child that is in the Southgate School District and a member of the Moms for Liberty of Wayne County Chapter. I am here today because I oppose the new proposed health education standards. As a parent, I believe these standards violate the, my right to opt my child out of lessons that I feel they are not appropriate. They also take control away from our local school boards and the people who know our students and our community best. Right now, I, I personally use the opt-out option for my child in the current sex, sex ed curriculum. And I appreciate our local school board district that allows the parents to do, make this choice. But under these new standards, that right can be taken away. I am asking that you protects, to protect parents' ability to make those personal decisions for our own children. These changes would also create a serious conflict in many families deeply held religious beliefs. For example, about 92% of Jehovah Witnesses' families and 90% of the Muslim families send their children to public schools. That is roughly 65,000 students across Michigan that could lose their place in public education if these standards are forced through. To me, that is heartbreaking. Public schools should welcome all families, not make them feel like they have to leave because their beliefs aren't being respected. Not every child is ready or mature enough for some of the topics that are being labeled as health education. Every student develops differently and every family has their own values and timing for what certain discussions should happen in their home. So I am asking you, please do not do what is right for all families. Protect parental rights to choose. Keep health education and sex education separate. And allow our local school boards to make the decisions that reflect the values of their communities that they serve. Thank you so much for your time and for listening to parents like me for simply what, to stay, that simply want to stay involved in their students' education.
Thank you. Next is Linda Wright. After Linda will be Joseph Zagu. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
My name is Linda. The standards inserted in this health framework are vague and overly broad, making it impossible for parents to determine when schools cross the line because the obscured line is not well-defined. The standards are not related to health and it is not proven science. It is based on social and cultural construct. Our children are not social experiments in a quest to impose a radical worldview. It is indoctrination, usurping and undermining parental rights and values while promoting extreme ideology as it relates to adolescent sexual activity and gender identity. Dismal, dismal reports show Michigan education ranks in the bottom half nationally with recent declines in math and reading proficiency. For example, in comparable districts nationwide, seven of eight Michigan districts do worse in math. 70% of Michigan districts underperform in reading. 71% of Michigan districts underperform in their graduation rate. Michigan's graduation rank, graduation ranked 43rd out of 48 states. Again, 43rd out of 48 states. The National Assessment of Educational Progress shows Michigan has seen a significant decline in its rankings from 14th to 36th in math and 20th to 42nd in reading and is considered to be near the bottom in recent results. These disgraceful stats are something the state should be acting upon to fix. It's mind-boggling that rather than focus on the extremely dismal academic decline and failure of our schools, these board members are fixated on social and cultural construct. Why? If this board adopts this substandard agenda, parents will only become stronger and more vocal advocates, activists for their children, including form statewide organizations and social media campaigns to engage in voter outreach and mobilization to alert Michigan voters of the dire straits of our schools and the dubious actions of this board. It is noted that of the eight current board members, we have two incumbents on the 2026 ballot. Or we can start a petition for school vouchers for the 2026 voting ballot. Vouchers have several potential benefits, including increasing parental choice in education, encouraging competition that may involve public schools, and providing access, access to better educational options for low-income students. A petition will also be a way to hold public schools accountable to parents and potentially address issues like failing schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joseph Zagu.
Good afternoon. My name's Joe Zago. My son's name is Giovanni Zago. He's done a lot of billboards and TV commercials around Metro Detroit. I love that boy more than I love life. My mom sat at this table for years and she was on the Board of Education back in the 80s. Her name was Penny Zago. She was a strong advocate for special education. And so last time I was in this building, I was a teenager and, you know, seeing her office overlooking the air conditioner outside. It's neat being back here as an adult, as a father. I think the one thing, when I look around this room outside, there, there's so many people out here. We all love our kids. We love our kids. We love our kids more than we love ourselves, I think. And, uh, when I was growing up, I was a dumb kid, you know? And our state was smart. We had smart kids in Michigan. And now Michigan's, that's flip-flopped since, in the last 40 years or so. And I think that the schools really need to focus on education. I think our schools need to focus on the reading, writing, arithmetic. I don't think that extending, um, we only got a minute or so, uh, community college. You know, the stuff that they're learning in community college nowadays, they should be, you know, should, should have learned in ninth and 10th grade. I think we need to focus on the real stuff to make our kids smart. I travel around the world, I look at other countries, and a lot of other countries don't have the problems that we have here, especially in Michigan. And, and they don't have to focus on teaching their kids to be nice to other kids. And if other kids are different from them, they, they should be kind to them. That's our parents' job. Our parents' job, I have to teach our kids the morals. The school's job is to, is to teach the kids how to be smart so we have an edge in, in, in the world today. And so I, I'm, I don't have a lot to say. I didn't come with a speech. I didn't, you know, I'm, I'm not the sharpest guy here. I'm just an average Joe with an average Giovanni, but I want my Giovanni to be smart and I want his focus at school to be on education. And I really think that the, the morals and being kind to other people and inclusive and all that stuff, it's our parents' role to teach our kids that. It shouldn't be put into the laws. And that's my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is Kathy Varnhagen, to be followed by Victoria Varnhagen. Hello. Once you're seated, you may begin your three minutes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kathy Varnhagen. I am a mom to four and grandmother to two in the state of Michigan. In 2004, the state of Michigan passed protection for parents of any public school student, giving them a choice in enrolling or refraining to enroll in the sex ed classes provided by the school under Act 451 of 1976. Under this act, sex ed is to be elective and not a requirement per paragraph two. So at its baseline, the proposed Michigan Health Education Standards format, with its inclusion of sex ed under their umbrella, goes against this law. For Michigan, therefore, to adopt this health education package, they would first need to overrule that 2004 law. So as I look at it, this alone should be a non-starter for even reviewing this. They should be separated at the very least. Secondly, but equal in importance, the content described within this document, even at a broad level, goes against what many people of religion, whether Christian, Jewish, Islamic, are taught as truths from God, representing a significant number of your constituents. I, as a parent and grandparent in the state, do not agree that it's healthy or appropriate to encourage students even as early as the elementary age to explore their sexuality with all of its options. Nor do I, and I hear this is going on from elementary teachers, and being held back from the parents that is being going, that is going on. Nor is it in our children's best interest to feel they have to keep their head down and stay in their lane, which is something that I hear from high school students who don't agree with what's being taught in the sex ed classes. We don't live in a perfect world. Concerned parents are not trying to overturn the sex ed program completely. They're asking for the freedom, which is their guaranteed right under this Michigan 451 Act, to opt out of the sex ed classes. A right these parents will lose if it's incorporated under the Health Act, which is being presented to you for a vote. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Victoria Varnhagen, to be followed by Joshua Varnhagen. Is there a Victoria Varnhagen? Or Joshua Varnhagen? Okay, very good. Thank you. Yep. When you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Thank you for extending your time to all of us today and thank you for your attention to our public education system. I have a beautiful, rambunctious two-and-a-half-year-old and a new two-month-old, who is the sweetest little boy in the world. I personally grew up in the public school system and my parents took advantage of the opt-in and out options available. But my concern today is not whether or not there is an option for opt-in or out of these materials, but that the gender and sexual ideologies that are included are even presented, they are far beyond reasonable and reach into the moral and behavioral upbringing of the parents. According to Justice Alito in the recent ruling of Mahmud versus Taylor, it is unconstitutional under the First Amendment for religious freedom for the government to place an undue burden on the parents of students when forced, when faced with educational content that fundamentally opposes religious beliefs and values. The new framework you are proposing places the undue burden of materials being presented to my children that fundamentally goes against the values and beliefs that I am trying to instill in them. Essentially, we should not have to be faced with removing our children from school because of the material presented. Today, I stand in the gap not only for my beautiful children, but for the soul of this generation. Thank you for your time today. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Joshua Varnhagen, to be followed by Brittany Betlayha. I apologize if I. Yep, go ahead and have a seat right there. And whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Joshua Varnhagen. I want to say thank you to all of you for all the work that you guys do. As, as a young father of two, realizing that it's my and my wife's responsibility to raise our kids to be fully functioning members of society and to raise them with the principles that were instilled from generations past. It's been something that I've taken on extremely lately with the birth of our two kids. And, and so reading over the, the different proposals that have been put forward with the health education and putting the sex ed under the health ed, I find it very unconstitutional. Our founding fathers and even reaching farther back to the Puritans that came over to the Americas were looking for religious freedom. And the First Amendment specifies that we do have the freedom to practice religion. The proposals put forth in the new health standards come directly against that because you're putting ideologies and persuasions, not facts, that have been proven by science, but ideologies and persuasions and teaching them as fact to the most malleable and vulnerable group that we have in this country, that being our children. They take everything that our teachers teach them as truth. And it's not a teacher's job to teach sexual identity, sexual orientation. It's not their job to teach that because that is such a core, fundamental thing for religion. And so coming back to what the Puritans were after, religious freedom, I urge you strongly to take or amend the radical things put forth in the new health education standards to better fit the freedom that our forefathers were looking for, that the Puritans and those that came before us came here for. So that we, as the parents, are able to do what we are responsible to do before God, that being raise our children. Thank you so much for your time and God bless you guys.
Thank you. Next is Brittany Betlayha, to be followed by Ralph Rebrandt. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Brittany Betlaya. You are very close. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Snyder and Mr. McMillan for advocating for us parents, educators, and concerned family members and who value our time just as much as your own as we personally drove over 100 miles to be here for this. And we can see those other individuals that are here for the people, for the children of Michigan, and those that are here for themselves. I ask you to reject the updated Michigan Health Education Standards, page 32, section 8.2 dot sh, talking about sexual identity expression, sexual orientation. We look at teachers as trusted individuals to teach our children, not indoctrinate them. And as a healthcare provider, I have taken an oath to do no harm and I cannot in good conscience stand back and watch this pass with these immoral and unethical health standards. We need to teach biology, not ideology. Gender ideology and sexual orientation is subjective, not objective information. And just in case somebody's not clear, the true difference between objective versus subjective, objective statements are based on verifiable facts and evidence free from personal feelings or biases. Subjective statements are based on personal opinions, feelings, interpretations that cannot be independently verified. Individuals can't drink, smoke till the age of 21 due to brain development and the risk of impaired judgment versus health risks of taking part of these activities. Why are we going to push ideology that leads children to make permanent decisions based on a temporary emotion? That's something you cannot take back and causes permanent and irreversible damage. And the day that this passes in the Michigan public health schools, or Michigan school system is the day I pull my children from the Michigan education, uh, public school system. Thank you.
Next is Ralph Rebrandt, to be followed by Representative Joe Pavlov. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Ralph Rebrandt. I am a pastor. I'm a police chaplain for the Michigan Chiefs of Police. I've served on two CAB boards currently, right now as well. And also I'm running for governor of Michigan. As a police chaplain, I've had to clean up the mess that this type of ideology has presented. And I, over the last 10 years, I've become aware of what's called the 45 Goals of the Communist Party in America. And I've seen this played out in real time. I'd like to read just three of them really quick. Get, get control of the schools. Use them as transmission belts for socialist and communist propaganda. Another one is break down cultural standards of morality by promoting pornography, obscenity, and books, magazines, motion pictures, radio, TV, and may I add, the classroom. Support any socialist movement to give centralized control over any part of culture, education, social agencies, and welfare. We live in a culture that has lost its way. It doesn't know where north is. And there are not 72 genders, friends. I've had to clean up that mess. There are not 72 genders, there are only two. Science proves that, everything proves it. And to bring that into the classroom and to then adopt this policy, which I'm against, would say that even a pastor or a chaplain can't sit on this board. Now, you may be thinking, as I've thought to myself, what are these friends here at the board thinking as they listen to folks? And the reality is, you may be thinking, well, it doesn't say that. It doesn't say that a pastor is not invited. Now, it doesn't say that a chaplain wouldn't be involved. And, and yet the reality is, it's not so much what it doesn't say, it's what it does say. And it's offering all of this ideology that really is outside of reality. The American Psychiatric Association describes gender dysphoria as a mental illness. I'm not describing it as such. You can look it up in DSM, that's how it's billed. And so I want to close with this story. Just last Saturday, Chloe Cole was in Michigan. She was a 13-year-old woman, or gal, who was confused. She had body parts. She had body parts removed and started the gender transition plan. At 16, she realized that was the biggest mistake of her life. And so, as I wrap this up, I would just encourage you folks to think about the decisions that you make as a board. You aren't making decisions today on this issue that are incidental. You're making decisions that will affect the lives of young people. You're making decisions that will ruin the future of young girls and young boys. And so, I would encourage you to think about that because the decisions you're going to make on this board are really instrumental in ruining the lives of young people.
Thank you. Next is Representative Joseph Pavlov to be followed by Heather Eckner. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
I'm State Representative Joe Pavlov of the 64th House District. I speak before you today in strong opposition to this proposed changes for our health education curriculum. Curriculum similar to this failed to pass through the legislature last year under a democratic trifecta because it's dangerous and harmful. Furthermore, these changes are contrary to the existing laws, which require local and parental control over opting their children in or out of sex education, which are now, you are now defining as health education. As a teacher of over 10,000 students during my 38-year career in the classroom, as a father of five, and as a grandfather of 18 and a legislator, I have learned an abundance about the education of children. And this proposed indoctrination is neither healthy nor will children flourish under it. What I have also seen during my life is the despicable and disgusting sexualization of our children in our schools and our culture. This proposal is nothing less than child sexual abuse. It is disgusting and evil. It takes a child who is precious and pure and confuses them and attacks their innocence. One of the key elements of childhood is innocence, which allows children to see the world in an innocent, loving, joyful, and carefree way. However, when a child's innocent is stripped from them, the damage is irreversible and destroys proper flourishing of that child. Let's look at some of the destructive components of this change. As a first example, this proposal will teach and quote, "gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation." And teachers explain that they are distinct components of every individual's identity. Michigan children are just trying to figure out who they are. They don't need the state to confuse them with this nonsense. As a second example, teachers would be required to explain how biological sex, gender identity, and gender expression are distinct concepts and how they interact with each other. This is not healthcare. This is politically-driven sex education. My colleagues and I in the House of Representatives have made it clear that parents are the primary educators of their children in matters of family, morality, sexuality, and not the state. This is an abuse of power of the state Board of Education. As a parent and an educator, this is not only an insult to parents and educators, but also distracts teachers from teaching important things, and this isn't one of them. Because of these problems with the curriculum, I urge you all to do what's right and reject this ideological poison.
Thank you for your comment today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Heather Eckner to be followed by Helena Miller. I saw her, she's in the green. Do you mind grabbing her items? Ms. Eckner, we'll pass those out for you. We'll come get them. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Good afternoon, board members, interim superintendent, and department staff. I'm Heather Eckner. I serve as the statewide director for education with the Autism Alliance of Michigan. Across our public comments this year, a consistent through line has emerged. We've been amplifying the right to a free, appropriate public education under the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or the IDEA, which reaches the 50th anniversary in November of this year. And we've been amplifying the growing disconnect between this educational right and the reality experienced by students with disabilities across Michigan. Today, I am addressing one of the most foundational of these disconnects, how Michigan funds special education and the opportunity that we have to fix it. The current funding model is outdated, inequitable, and unjust. Michigan's current special education finance system fails to meet the needs of the very students it is meant to serve. It reimburses districts at just 28.6% of the total costs, among the lowest in the nation. It relies heavily on local property taxes, limiting resources in communities with fewer means. It penalizes the districts working hardest to support students with the most complex needs, creating vast disparities in service delivery. This is not merely a budgetary issue, it is a civil rights issue. Underfunding special education denies students access to the individualized supports, services, and staffing required by law, and essential to their success. As complaints rise, graduation rates fall, and educators face resource constraints, one truth becomes clear: A broken funding system creates broken outcomes. The Michigan Special Education Finance Reform Blueprint represents a critical stakeholder-driven response to these structural failures. Authorized by the legislature and led by a statewide collaborative, including school personnel, families, advocates, technical experts, researchers, and policy leaders, this project has designed a new weighted funding model based on student needs, not zip codes. To date, more than 1,000 stakeholders have shaped this effort, including many of the same families and educators impacted by the current system shortcomings. This is not about tweaking an old formula. It is about building a better one from the ground up, one that is transparent, fiscally sound, and aligned with research based on what students with disabilities need. As this work enters its final phase, the Autism Alliance of Michigan urges the state board and the Michigan Department of Education to elevate the blueprint as a core component — the final report will be delivered October 30th — of much-needed education reform, prioritize the framework in this current budget cycle now, fiscal year '26, '27, and champion stakeholder voice. Underfunding equals underserving. Finance reform is civil rights work. This is our moment, and we're ready to stand and partner with all that want to serve kids with disabilities in this state. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Helena Miller to be followed by Eileen McNeil. Helena Miller. Last call for Helena Miller. Okay. Eileen McNeil. You're good. Thank you. Once you're seated, you may... Yeah, no, I appreciate it. You may begin your three minutes once you're ready.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your extending the time for all the people here and all the people that are on the line. I'm the president of Citizens for Traditional Values, and we represent thousands of families and parents in the state. And to be very honest with you, I say ditto to almost all the comments that were made today opposing these updates of this health standards. I think it's really important that... Why did we have to ring the bell on this? It would have been impossible for all these parents to know about this had we not had some really great people sitting in your board meeting and happened to see you're ready to propose critical alarming new changes. Something has to be done to improve a way for parents to understand this because you weren't doing your job and alerting all these parents. It was groups like ours and the representatives and other groups that were here speaking earlier. And this is a critical parental issue. Parents are so tired of being left out of the equation, and I know that's what you... You guys are parents, and you want to know what's happening with your kids. And this is, you know, these issues are absolutely every part of their right to know about. So, I encourage you, for all of these issues, that you really ring the bell a little louder for parents to know when things like this are coming up. And I am so thankful for everyone who came. I just want to mention something else. Representative Pavlov mentions House Bill 6068. You could probably take some of the language out of House Bill 6068 and put it right into your health standards that did not pass the legislature. We all have elected legislative representatives. They chose not to pass this language. They knew it was detrimental to children. So, why is it being incorporated as standards into the Department of Education standards for health? And health class is different than sex ed class. We all know that. We really did it right. I mean, it's actually something the state did right in separating these classes so that parents always had an option to opt out and that they had an option to have an advisory board of clergy and the community, just like you've heard. And moving sex education under the guise... I know you're saying, no, it's not sex. Well, according to the Supreme Court, gender identity and sexual orientation is defined as sex. So, let's not just be obtuse here. You don't have the right to do this. It will be legally challenged, but let's not get to that point. I think you're hearing a lot of great input, and I know that you respect that, and I appreciate your time here today.
Thank you so much. Next is Lori Skibo to be followed by Kevin Kiefski. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Lori Skibo, and I'm here today because I reject the Michigan Health Education Standards because I think they have gone too far. They are not health standards. They're ideological guidelines disguised as education. Parents across Michigan are outraged, and rightfully so. Children do not belong to the state. They belong to their parents, period. It's parents who raise children, guide them, and decide what they learn about personal, religious, and moral issues. Schools are here to teach academics, not to push controversial lessons about gender identity, sexuality, or political ideology. What is being pushed here is government control over family values. When the state steps in to tell children what to believe about matters that belong in the home, it's not about education anymore. It's indoctrination, and it's unconstitutional. We need classrooms that teach reading, math, science, and real health, not radical social theory. This board should be partnering with parents, not undermining them. Michigan families are watching. The trust between parents and this state's education system has been shattered. It was broken when school boards stopped listening to parents. It was broken when elected officials dismissed their concerns, and it is broken when the government tried to insert itself into the family's role. For years, parents trusted schools to look out for their children, to educate them, not to influence them. This trust was earned over generations, and now it's been traded away for a one-sided political agenda. You cannot rebuild public confidence while ignoring the public's voice. I'm asking you to reject the proposed standards and start listening to the people who know and love children best, their moms and their dads. Michigan's families can no longer give blind trust. This is an opportunity for you to earn that trust back. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kevin Kiefski to be followed by Debbie Ross. Whenever you're ready, you may begin. If you have a handout, we'll come get... Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent and members of the board. My name is Kevin Kiefski. I'm a candidate for Michigan Attorney General. In addition, I am a former school superintendent for the Archdiocese of Detroit. 30,000 kids, 3,000 employees, 90 schools. When managing Michigan's largest private school system, I always respected legal boundaries, parental rights, and age-appropriate content. I urge all of you to do the same. I'm here today to strongly oppose these suggested updates to Michigan's Health Education Standards framework. I'm also here today to be a voice for all Michigan parents and the rule of law. Under Michigan law, MCL 380.1507, sex education is an elective. It's not part of any mandatory health education required for graduation. It requires parental notification, opt-out rights without penalty, and a sex education advisory board that includes parents to ensure transparency. But this particular proposed framework, right here, violates these safeguards, plain and simple, by doing what? Embedding a whole bunch of nonsense into health classes. It mandates teaching gender being fluid and having sexual discussions early. By middle school, students must define gender identity as being distinct from biological sex. This framework expands health education well beyond non-sexual topics like nutrition, exercise, and mental health. Rather, this particular framework unlawfully, and I'm going to make that very clear, unlawfully basically makes it a graduation requirement, eliminating opt-outs and bypassing advisory boards, exposing schools to legal liability. There are a lot of different things here said about U.S. Supreme Court cases such as Mahmoud v. Taylor. I completely agree with that. But here's one thing I want this particular board and I want every single school district to know, and I'm going to be very crystal clear. As Michigan's next Attorney General, I will rigorously enforce Michigan law, protect parental rights, and pursue accountability, including litigation against any district or state actor for any unlawful changes. This represents a deliberate erosion of parental rights. I urge you to reject this framework and to avoid violating Michigan law. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Debbie Ross to be followed by Anne Henriksen.
Whenever you're ready, you may begin. Hi, my name is Debbie Ross, and I'm here as a mom and a potential future grandmother and just as a concerned citizen. I urge you, as others have, to vote no on this package of standard... The legislature did not pass it for a reason, and it should not be rammed through this body without the proper legislative happenings. I couldn't help but note that the comments here are probably at least 90% against this, probably higher than that. I didn't actually do the calculation, but everybody here, for the most part, and the ones here who are pushing it, can help note either that they are on the taxpayer dole. They're educators or people who have been supported by taxpayer money through their careers. The people that are here speaking out against this are people that have children and are concerned about what's going on in our schools. I think it was Ms. Nottingham who made a comment about not supporting the... I think she said 4%, which is ridiculous. I think if you actually did a survey, you'd find out that a vast majority of Michigan parents do not want this ideological subject matter taught to their children. This package is a wolf in sheep's clothing. If you pass this, it will leave Michigan parents no choice but to pull their students from the public school if they do not agree with this because you're putting it into coursework that is required for graduation. Somebody else, I think it was Monica Yatuma, made a comment about it being an opt-in, or making an opt-in curriculum. And I totally agree with this. Instead of being an opt-out, this should be opt-in to make sure that parents are aware of exactly what's going to be taught to their children, and they have to opt in in order for their student to participate. And I'm going to give you an example. There was a recent survey that went out at a local school district to children as young as third grade, and it was penned as a bullying survey. But the first two questions were, what is your gender identity and what is your sexual preference? This went to children as young as third grade. Third grade. They shouldn't even know what gender identity means at that age. They're children. Let them be children and get the heck out of...
Thank you for your comment today. Next is Anne Henriksen, followed by Kristi Gibson-Marshall, who is the final person for... for in-person comment today. Whenever you're ready, you may begin your three minutes.
Okay. Thank you so much for your sacrifice and allowing us to speak. I drove from Holland and got here just in the nick of time, and I've missed a few appointments because I'm not back home, but that's okay. That's worth the sacrifice. So I'm an educator, and I've taught from kindergarten to sixth grade, so I understand children as they go. My daughter is now 50 years old. We adopted her, and she had been sexually abused before we got her at three, and she has transgendered to a man. And I love her dearly, but we have our difficulties because she knows what I know. I'm also a victim of sexual abuse, so I speak from a different perspective as a child and what that means to your innocence, and it's lifelong. I'm 82, and it's lifelong. I still suffer from the things that were done, and I'm thankful for the people that love me and my God, I'll say it that way. So I'm very concerned about what you're voting for here. This is ideology, and I'm old enough to know what it means. It is a current trend, and it is fading out. So it's important that you take your responsibility as to what this can do to children, and it is damaging. So I would convince you with all that I know, please do not put sex education into your health care, hide it away. I've read the whole standard that you've written, and I am very concerned at the loopholes. For instance, there is no place in there that says parents can opt out. But today, October 14th, when I opened up an email and researched it, you said, no, that was misinformation. It wasn't misinformation. It was no information. We were not informed until today that parents could be opt out, but it's not in the document itself. So I'm very concerned. The other thing is you're talking about health, mental health and physical health, STDs, drugs, et cetera. Why isn't pornography in there? I don't know how many people in this room are addicted to pornography, and that's women as well. This is a serious crime against children, and they're seeing it as old as six years old on their phones, but it's not addressed. Parents don't even know it and what to do with it. So this should be one of the big things that you pay attention to in your health care.
Thank you for your comment today. Last person in the room today is Kristi Gibson-Marshall. Once you're seated, you may begin your three minutes.
Hello, my name is Kristi Gibson-Marshall, and I have dedicated 31 years to serving students at Oxford Community Schools in a variety of roles as teacher and as an administrator. That said, I would like to take this opportunity to express my gratitude to the Board of Education for all of your support during our tragedy in November 2021. Also, thank you for allowing me to speak today, as I flew home this morning from visiting my mom who has cancer, just to be here today. So thank you for allowing me to speak. As I previously mentioned, I spent a decade as a health education and physical education teacher and 21 years as a boots-on-the-ground administrator in Oxford Community Schools. It has been a privilege for me to participate in the review of the health education standards in a process that our health education teachers have very much eagerly anticipated. The current health standards were established in 2007 and no longer reflect the realities faced by today's students. Our communities have undergone significant changes since then with influences such as social media, one-on-one technology, mobile devices, global pandemic, and an increase in school violence shaping their lives. The proposed 2025 health education standards emphasize skill development, effective implementation, equipping students with the tools necessary to navigate the vast amount of misinformation and information that social media, news outlets, and the Internet have provided as resources. By fostering critical assessment skills, this curriculum aims to empower the students to evaluate validity of the information they encounter, thereby promoting resilience and informed decision-making. Given that many Americans, maybe even people at this table, have a variety of health conditions and concerns, it is crucial that we implement a comprehensive health education curriculum focused on skill building, early development of healthy habits, and skills that play a vital role in addressing concerns such as weight management, cardiovascular health, substance misuse, and mental and emotional well-being, as well as fostering positive relationships. Establishing strong habits from a young age can help mitigate challenges that many individuals contend with as they go through their lives. We appreciate that the curriculum is inclusive and responsive to diverse needs of students, and it not only addresses the unique requirements of various learners but also extends beyond the traditional learners. The curriculum provides differentiated instruction, tailored resources to meet the diverse learning styles and pacing of students, ensuring that all individuals engage in meaningful content. Transgender and LGBTQ+ students are acknowledged and included in classroom discussion, fostering a sense of belonging and acceptance.
Thank you for your comment today.
That is every person in the room today.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. All right, Board members, we said we'd hear everyone that was -- thank you. We said we'd hear everyone that was in the room, and then we'd come back to the table to make a motion on how we want to handle the 16 --
There's 16 in the queue.
There's 16 in the queue online.
I make a motion that we listen --
Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, I make a motion that we continue, and if we need to, we can table the music standards or whatever, but I think we can at least get these 16 in and be done.
So your motion is to listen to the rest of the public comments that are waiting online. Is there a support?
Yes, support.
Ms. Snyder, thank you. Any discussion? Dr. Pugh.
I will like to defer to the board member who has to leave early, and also it sounds like as part of the motion, Board Member McMillan is saying rearrange the agenda, so other board members thoughts on that.
All right, just before you talk, Dr. -- I mean, Mr. McMillan, Ms. Pritchett, it was thrown to you.
Yes, I know it was. It is 3:20. I assume if we're following the three minutes, we're -- I don't do math well, may I --
Forty-eight minutes.
Forty-eight minutes. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And then I think we look at the agenda, and again, I need to leave at 5, so wherever we are in the agenda at that point.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett.
I appreciate you trying to work around this, but unfortunately, I have to leave at 5.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Pritchett is to Mr. McMillan and then Senator Bullock.
Well, I was just saying that that would be a second motion, or we could just deal with that when we reach the music standards. I'm just thinking that we could just get this done and see where we're at, so I wasn't making a second motion.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McMillan. Senator Bullock.
I'd amend the time of the folks online to one or two minutes. He needs to make a decision on that. Three minutes is probably not going to cut it.
So I would just say, for the sake of everybody who's already given comment, we should give comment for three minutes to the people who are online. So was that a friendly amendment? Did you want -- oh, okay, thank you. Thank you, Senator Bullock. Any more discussion? Ms. Lipton and then Dr. Robinson.
There's no friendly amendments.
No.
Okay, I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
This is not a friendly amendment. This is an amendment.
Thank you.
That we continue on the agenda as it was published and as the public is expecting us to do their business, and that we reconvene at a later point in the agenda to finish the public comment online and complete public comment online today, but after we have gone through the agenda as has been published and approved by this body.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Back to you, Mr. McMillan, whether you -- no?
Well, no, she's making --
We need a second on her amendment.
Second on your amendment.
I'm second.
Now, are you seconding?
Yes.
Thank you. Just one second when I call on you. You were seconding. Mr. McMillan.
I don't think that's an amendment. I think that's just a vote no on mine and then move forward with the agenda. I don't know that -- it's not even pertinent. I mean, if she said something that amended, would I --
I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, it's an amendment.
Ms. Lipton.
Yeah, the motion, as I understand it, was to extend public comment again.
Yes.
At this point in time, and my amendment is to extend public comment.
Yes, later.
Different point of time in the agenda. So I think it is an appropriate amendment.
Yes.
Thank you.
Got it. Dr. Robinson.
I believe that we also have people that are on the agenda that are here in the building who have taken off today of work as well. I think we should honor that commitment as well and then move on.
So we have an amendment, a second, so we're going to vote on the amendment.
That's correct.
Discussion.
Discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder.
So we've had 30 people in remote queue, and that went down to 16?
There's never been more than 19.
Oh, I thought you said there was --
There's 43 registered, and there's never been more than 19 in the queue online.
And we currently have how many, 15 or 16?
It's been ebbing and flowing between 16 and 18. Currently, it's 19 right now.
Okay, that's different than what we were talking about before. And so we're proposing that we would pick them back up at when?
We finish with the agenda.
So the problem with that is not continuing to go with public comment is that these individuals might not be able to stay on and give public comment.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Senator Bullock.
I mean, while that makes -- it seems rational, you're going to lose people in the regular course of time, so that is their right to stay on or not stay on, just like sitting here. So it's not necessarily pertinent to whether they're stay on to be heard.
Thank you, Senator Bullock. Any further discussion before we go to the vote so we can move on?
Just --
Mr. McMillan.
I mean, just there was an argument made to support this amendment, a non-friendly amendment, that there are people that took work off and that are here, that they will -- we're going to go through the agenda, whether we, you know, vote to continue listening to people online or not or on the phone. So I don't understand that. That's not an argument. Those people that are here will be heard that are on the agenda.
Mr. McMillan, we're ready for the vote.
And lastly, I'd just say that if they knew that this would happen, they might have been here in person, so.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Are we ready for the vote?
When are we voting?
We are voting on the amendment to listen to the participants who have public comment online for three minutes after we go through the agenda items.
And if it's adopted, point of order, and if it's adopted, then we would vote on the new base amendment or new base motion.
If it's adopted, yes.
Or fails.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Evans. Bullock.
Yes.
Lipton.
Yes.
McMillan.
No.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
And Snyder.
No.
Motion carries. The amendment passes. All right.
Now, that's the new motion.
That's the new motion. Ready for the vote? Ms. Evans. Bullock.
Yes.
Lipton.
Yes.
McMillan.
No.
Pritchett.
I'm sorry.
Amendment is basically the same thing because it amended the base, so now we have to vote on the base.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Pugh.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
And Snyder.
No.
Motion carries.
All right. Next item on the agenda is Item E, the approval of the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting on September 9th, 2025. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular and committee meeting of the whole? Dr. Pritchett, may I have a second?
Support.
Dr. Pugh, thank you. Any discussion on the minutes? Dr. Pugh.
Not on the minutes. I'm sorry, but are we going to tell people on the line what's -- Theory. Okay, got you. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh.
That was kind of confusing, so hopefully somebody's able to explain what's happening. Okay.
No, no, you're fine.
No discussion.
Okay. Roll call vote, please. Ms. Evans. Bullock.
Yes.
Lipton.
Yes.
McMillan.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
And Snyder.
Pass.
Thank you. Next item is Item F, the approval of the minutes of the legislative committee meeting on October 9th. May I please have a motion?
Don't move.
Dr. Pritchett. Second? Dr. Robinson? Any discussion? Ms. Evans. Bullock.
I missed it.
This is a vote. Committee meeting minutes.
Oh, yes.
Lipton. Yes.
Yes.
Pritchett.
Yes.
Pugh.
Yes.
Robinson.
Yes.
And Snyder.
I just had one question and discussion. Again, it was recorded and it's available to the public?
Yes.
Pass. Yes, and I explained that at the last meeting, Liz.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Item G, presentation of Special Education Advisory Committee Annual Report. I am going to ask the presenters to come forward. Board, you have a copy of the annual report, so just for the sake of time, I'm asking the presenters if they wouldn't mind and if the board wouldn't mind that we just see if the board has any questions on the annual report or if the board wants to hear the full presentation. The presenters are willing to go either way. Are there any -- we'll go the first way. We'll go to see if the board has any questions. Does any question -- does the board have any questions on the annual report?
Would it be possible for them to sort of go through the highlights?
Absolutely. I will turn it over to you, Dr. Hamerla.
Since we're going to go through the highlights, we're going to skip the slides we typically share with you about the functions of CAC, and we'll jump to Slide 8, which will highlight why we're not bringing nominations to you today, and then we'll share with you a few highlights from the annual report that you received. And I'm going to hand it over to Teri Pettit, our facilitator for CAC.
Good afternoon, Board and Dr. Carnell. It's a privilege to be here again and see you all. We're going to jump to Slide 8, so if you could do that, Dr. Hamerla, that would be very helpful. There are specific instructions in the Michigan compiled laws that stipulate our relationship with the State Board of Education. These are highlighted in the next two slides and include the number of members and term limits the CAC needs to follow, who must be seated on the committee as ex officios is required in the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, IDEA, and the framework of the CAC includes the requirement that the CAC act as an advisor to the State Board of Education regarding the meeting of unmet needs of students with disabilities. IDEA mandates at least 51% of members must be individuals with disabilities or parents of children with disabilities. These members are referred to as defined members. These members -- this requirement ensures that CAC is representative of the broader community and can effectively advise. The number of defined members for the 2024 and 2025 year reached an impressive 63%. This means our organizations and agencies are invested in assuring the parent voice is in the majority and sends us their nominees who also meet the definition of defined members. You likely noted that there were no new members at large for the board to appoint this fall. That's unusual. This is because they were all appointed in the spring, and you took care of that already. And they've already begun their three-year terms, and they've left us with no vacancies currently, so we're very happy about that. Thank you. Just lastly, I want to highlight some noteworthy accomplishments of CAC in the past year that are included -- that are included in the report that you received but might be overlooked. Number one, we were able to provide useful feedback to the Office of Special Education, and I'll call them OCE from this point on, for their ongoing work with ISDs on how to communicate regarding placement decisions in the Individual Education Program or IEP. You will see this information on Pages 13 through 15 and again on Page 18 in the annual report. This communication is important because it assures parents have a voice in the work of OCE. The second thing, CAC additionally provided feedback on how to approach transition planning at an earlier age so students can benefit from the use of a personal curriculum and develop a strong course of study that matches their transition needs. You can read more about that on Pages 17, 18, and 25 in the annual report. Page 31 in the report, you will see that our participation numbers in our meeting rose dramatically through COVID and by keeping alive the online option for meetings, we're able to engage with more members each month, including our alternates for organizations and agencies that used to participate only if the delegate was absent. This change has benefited CAC members in providing a comprehensive understanding of all the information we cover in a year's time. And then lastly, something that's not in our report that's also noteworthy, our membership and OCE commitment to hold monthly meetings is very unusual. We hold meetings nine months out of the year and that's vastly different from other states in the United States, some of which only meet once or twice a year and only have a fraction of the membership that we currently enjoy. Our members, our organizations, and agencies have a commitment that is unwavering and is unmatched nationwide. So thank you for allowing us this time to share some of our accomplishments from this past year. And does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Pettit. Ms. Pettit is our CAC facilitator. Joined with Ms. Pettit, aside from Dr. Hamerla, who is the Deputy Superintendent for the Division of Educator Excellent, Career, and Technical Education, Special Education and Administrative Law, is Ms. Teri Rink, who is the Director of the Office of Special Education. So, thank you. Board members, do you have any questions? Mr. McMillan, thank you for being recognized.
Thank you. Looking at the annual report, purpose of the committee advised the State Education Agency on unmet needs within the state and the education of children with disabilities. I guess I still feel compelled to ask you, ask CAC to weigh in on the lack of compensatory services, that it was not provided due to failed instruction that came from MDE during COVID. And so I would ask that if that is one of your purposes, that you would step up to the plate and do that. I also would just encourage, I mean, I think there's an overall and I issue that I hope maybe our new superintendent will look at because it's kind of a longer range issue of really the whole idea of how we do special education appeals. The ISD is, you know, advocate and it's also compliance. And it's just not, it's just not the place where, I mean, the current appeal process that parents have, you know, they appeal to a body that is comprised by people that the locals put on that board. So there's just, there's no real true appeal for parents that have real problems and run into a brick wall with their IEPs and they have differences with them or disagreements. So I just think there's needs to be a fundamental issue. I know you guys don't have authority, but you certainly, if you're advising on the unmet needs, I think this is an unmet need in special education.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Any other comments or questions? All right. Thank you, presenters.
Thank you.
Dr. Hamerla, you can stay up. I know you had planned to do that anyway. The next item on the agenda is Item H, Presentation of Proposed Standards for Preparation of Teachers of Music. This presentation will share with the board members the new standards for the preparation of teachers of music in grades pre-K through 12. These standards would replace the standards for the preparation of teachers of music education previously approved by the board in May 2004. This presentation will be followed by a period of public comment and a request for approval at a future meeting. Our presenters at the table is Dr. Michelle Hamerla. And from the Office of Educator Excellent, we have Ms. Kelly Brozansky, who is the Director, Dr. Sean Kotke, who is the Assistant Director of that office, Dr. Gina Gardner, who is the Higher Education Consultant for that office. We also join, also we have with us Ms. Karen McAvoy, Music Teacher Executive Director for the Michigan Music Education Association. Welcome, presenters. Please begin.
Thank you. We're just going to get right started with Dr. Gardner. He's going to get us rolling.
All right. Um, good afternoon. Thank you for your time today. The work that we're going to present to you supports Goal 7, to increase the numbers of certified teachers in areas of shortage. And today, we're talking about music educators. To, oops. Yep, yep. Yes. So today's, oh, the standards update, my apologies. So for our process, and we wanted to make sure that the board understood what process we go through to update standards, one of the pieces, once we determine that standards are needing to be updated, we need to identify those necessary perspectives and we activate stakeholders. Those stakeholders come from our educator preparation programs, but they also come from our K-12 educators in these fields. And in this instance, we reached out to many K-12 music educators to make sure that we have their voices on that committee. We have the educators work together to create the proposed standards. We actually submit them out for an additional round of feedback from other educators and do another round of revision before they come here to the board for review. We will then go to a period of public comment and I will convene, we will reconvene our stakeholders one more time, once the public comment is complete, in order for them to read all of the public comment and for us to address all of the public comment. Once that is completed, then we bring it back to the board for a final vote of approval and we begin technical assistance with our educator preparation providers. Why new standards for music education preparation? Today's revised standards are a continuing extension of our new certificate structure and the revision that we have done across the entire certificate structure. We have gotten through our grade bands and content areas and we're very excited to finally move to our K-12 content areas. You heard art last month and now we're here bringing music before you today. Our current music preparation standards were approved in 2004 and they are very much in need of updating to align with current national music education and educator preparation standards. Who are our music educators? Music educators play a critical role in enhancing students' holistic development across their school career. These educators work with students in preschool and elementary school on general music and basic skills and knowledge in those early learning levels. This extends through high school where they teach theory, appreciation, choir, musical theater, band, and orchestra. Teaching four-year-old students music is vastly different from teaching a 15-year-old music. Coordination of multiple performance groups requires additional management skills for instruments and program needs and positions change yearly. Many of our music teachers also have a very unique position in their community where they bring that community together for the sake of their music program. For participation in the process, our team gathered 13 writing team members and an additional 19 reviewers to discuss and craft the standards revision. These included K-12 music teachers teaching from elementary to high school and across school and geographic contexts. We also included Michigan Music Education Association representation. Additionally, we included music education preparation faculty from both public and private small colleges. We wanted to make sure as a member of, that we have representation and voice from multiple places. As a member of our writing team, Karen will now explain the committee process.
Thank you. So we began with a review of the current standards, reaching out for feedback from Michigan Music Education Association members, active teachers in both the pre-K-12 and the collegiate levels. Then we also took that feedback. We looked at existing standards outside of the state of Michigan, specifically organizations like the National Association for Schools of Music and the Music Teachers National Association. So we looked at those certifying standards as well. Through group discussion and feedback, we agreed that the 2004 standards covered the important musicianship needs but left out a lot of the other things that music teachers need to be prepared for. So specifically the domains of musicianship, professionalism, and pedagogy, which were included in the 2004 standards document. We primarily kept a lot of that language, updating it for clarity and incorporating some related domains from that previous document, such as the creativity and the technology and analysis pieces. A critical update to the new standards is the addition of the preschool level to the certification. So the inclusion of domains on music and kinesthetic development underscores our commitment to equipping future educators with the understanding needed to effectively teach across the full span of learner development. Then finally, the engagement and management domains are extensions of the professional knowledge and skill standards but specifically address the unique challenges that music teachers face across the spectrum of classroom settings. The question that we continually asked ourselves as we wrote these standards was, why? For what purpose must a new teacher have this skill? Our goal was to keep the document focused not only on the certifying teacher but on their future students as well. In order to avoid redundancies, we cross-referenced all of our proposed standards against the new professional knowledge and skill standards to ensure that we were only including in our document those things that were specifically unique to music education.
Our stakeholders began work on these standards in August of 2023. We drafted standards, had multiple conversations and all-day meetings. Then we went to the field for targeted feedback in early 2024 and reconvened everyone last fall to look at that feedback and come up with the standards document you have in front of you. And we're excited to present these today. Our next steps include a period of public comment that will begin on Thursday. We will continue that through the first week of December. We will then reconvene our stakeholder group to review that comment and make revisions as needed. We hope to return to the board for a final approval presentation in late winter 2026. Once the standards are approved, we will begin the next phase of implementation, which includes technical assistance to providers and the development of a new Michigan test for teacher certification. Thank you very much for your time today. Are there any questions?
Thank you, presenter. Board members, do you have any questions or comments for the presenters? Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you for the presentation. How many universities in Michigan have a program for music educators? Besides the great Michigan State University?
We currently have 22 programs, 22 traditional programs. And then we have seven alternative route programs that are also offering it. Out of the 22, 12 are independent colleges and 10 are public.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Lipton.
Yes, I'm just looking at Slide number nine. And you've summarized the key shifts. Could you just put a little more meat on the bones in terms of, you know, what that would mean maybe to a, you know, a layperson or, you know, really to me as not a music educator? Like what exactly is the sort of overarching theme with these key shifts?
Sure. Well, as stated earlier, certified music educators are eligible to accept a position anywhere from preschool, so three-year-olds, all the way up through seniors in high school, so 18-year-olds. In addition to that, teaching settings can vary wildly from elementary teachers who are teaching on a cart as in they don't have a dedicated teaching space but travel into other spaces, to high school band or orchestra programs where they are expected to manage thousands of dollars of worth of equipment. So what we were trying to do in these standards was outline some of those skills and knowledge pieces that are necessary to be prepared to walk into any of those various settings.
So to, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I would just add that previous standards really kind of focused just on content and didn't have that pedagogical piece in it of how are you teaching these things? It really listed a lot of the what you teach. And so this committee really wanted to expand on that and really get into how are we teaching these music pieces and what are those critical pedagogical structures that need to be included?
So if I'm hearing you, it sounds like you've really, in the update, it's really focused on like the real-world experience of what a teacher might face anywhere in Michigan because we are a very diverse state. We've got a lot going on. So it sounds like it's really preparing that sort of deeper level of all the various situations and settings that they might face and setting them up to be successful early on. Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Dr. Robinson.
So I know, I would think, I would assume that teacher preparation would have some overlap with teacher certification.
It's all part of the same ecosystem.
So current teacher certification in music is K-12? Is there any thought to expanding it to pre-K-12?
That is what these standards do.
Okay. And there, I'm assuming there's also some overlap with what student teaching or the internship experience would look like?
Those are following our clinical experience requirements across the board. So they have the same clinical experience requirements, that minimum of 600 hours with a minimum of a 300-hour internship.
And does it, is there any language that directs where those internships should be placed?
We are leaving that to the teacher preparation institutions. We are not including, previous standards did have very specific where those should be and also credit numbers. Those are all pulled from the standards. The standards are really about the content of the program. And then we recommend for K-12 teachers that those clinical experiences do include settings across that K-12 spectrum though, so that they get children, young children, middle school students, and high school experience.
Okay, but when you say clinical experiences, that's things in addition to student teaching experience, right? That's other field experience type placements, classes that have a professional development school component, right? Because there are states that require that teachers that have a pre-K or a K-12 certification teach, do their student teaching placements at multiple levels.
Oh, and we do not have that requirement in place. They can get those earlier grade levels or older grade levels.
In other ways.
In their program and that internship really should be one placement. But it can be two depending on the situation.
Dr. Robinson, any other board members for comments or questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, presenting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item is Item I, the approval of the State Board of Education meeting schedule for 2026. So board members, you have a copy of the meeting schedule. These, the schedule avoids conflicts with holidays and meetings with the National Association of State Boards of Education. I'd like to bring two dates to your attention. The board work session is scheduled for Wednesday, May 20th, 2026. The board work session is scheduled for Wednesday, May 20, 2026, and due to Labor Day in 2026, the September board meeting will be held on Wednesday, September 9. So those are in your proposed dates. May I please have a motion to approve the State Board of Education meeting schedule for 2026? Dr. Robinson, second by Senator Bullock. Any discussion? Thank you, Senator Bullock. Ms. Evans? Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
And Snyder?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next is the report of the State Board President.
I just put a note here because, Dr. Carnell, you asked if we were band members, but I wasn't drumming bugle corps, but I was a flag girl, so, okay. I want to start by congratulating Tiffany Tilly, who was not able to come to today's meeting. She was awarded at the, this year's Black Caucus, thank you, annual legislative conference for the Conference of Black Mayors, or Congressional Black Caucus. Thank you. I don't know why I'm having mayors on my mind. Thank you, Congressional Black Caucus. So I want to congratulate her on her award. Want to quickly get into the public discourse around Michigan's draft health education standards, which has been stated, but can't be stated enough, is a framework and not a curriculum, and it has been flooded with misinformation. People who should know better, including some at this table, have been misleading parents with false claims about mandatory gender ideology and the loss of parent rights, parental rights, and the truth is simple. Parents should never be left out of the equation when it comes to their children. We will discuss this a little bit more, but I tell people, I will tell people right now to go to page five, and I hope that we can have this conversation and start this conversation there, where it is very clear that parent rights, local control, and transparency remain fully intact in the proposed standards. Parents continue to have the right to review materials to opt their child out of any sex education lesson without penalty. Local parent-majority school ed advisory boards decide whether and how sex education is offered, and general health remains a graduation requirement, just as it has for nearly two decades. The standards themselves are long overdue for an update. They were last revised in 2007 and are designed to reflect best practices in mental and emotional health, safety, healthy relationships, nutrition, and physical activity, substance use, prevention, and community health. They focus on equipping students with age-appropriate knowledge and life skills, not ideology. And let's be clear about how identity actually appears. Gender identity is not an instructional objective at any age grade. There are no identity lessons in grades K through 5, just kindness, inclusion, personal safety, and tell a trusted adult guidance. Middle school students may encounter glossary-level definitions to help them understand language that they hear already or see, paired with lessons on consent, bystander action, and respectful communication. High school standards build on these foundations by teaching applied skills and healthy relationships, consent, rights, responsibilities, and how to seek help. There are not directives about belief or medical choices. They are practical lessons for life and safety. And while some attempt to stow fear with lies about these standards, what has received far too little attention is a real crisis, and that is the hollowing out of the very resources our children rely on. The U.S. Department of Education has executed mass layoffs, gutting entire sections of IDEA as we speak, and TRIO programs that support students with disabilities, first-generation and low-income youth. Educators are losing jobs, families are losing services, and the programs that uphold equity and opportunity are being quietly dismantled. Reports confirm slower IDEA granting processing, reduced access to federal technical assistance, delayed disbursements, and weakened oversight of programs designed to protect students with disabilities and help young people reach college. That chaos is not accidental. It's meant to disconnect us from facts and from each other, and ultimately to control the narrative by erasing truth. We have a choice here, wedge politics or mutual respect, and at this table, we will choose facts, we will choose truth, and we put children over the politics. And in response, we must continue to correct the record publicly and directly by reaffirming parents' rights, local decision-making, and transparency. And while we are protecting student safety by centering respect, inclusion, and honest communication in our standards, we must continue monitoring the federal disruption to IDEA and TRIO and preparing state-level guidance in case these failures delay services to Michigan families. And we are pressing forward on literacy, mental health, and school climate work, ensuring that every child learns in an environment where they are supported, seen, and safe. We need parents as partners. We also need partners across government and community who are working with us, not against us. We need a legislator that puts children first, and as it relates to literacy rates, we need the funding, funding that works, evidence-based literacy programming to continue be funded, mandatory training for educators, student mental health services being funded in a recurring basis. I could go on and on and on. Local districts and school education advisory boards must keep parents engaged and informed, and to the board members who showed up, we are counting on you. This is a local-controlled state, and we must keep parents engaged and informed and maintaining clear communication and choice at the local level. Families and educators must continue to engage constructively, reviewing materials, sharing input, and reporting bullying and harassment swiftly. And our federal delegation must demand restoration of the U.S. Department of Education capacity, especially within IDEA and TRIO. And I will end by saying or reiterating that I am outraged that misinformation is being weaponized to frighten parents by those sitting idly by while entire programs serving students with disabilities and low-income youth are being dismantled before our eyes. We must stay focused on facts, safety, and learning, and that chaos we are witnessing is intentional. We must know that, but so is our resistance. We will continue to speak truth, to lead with integrity, and to put children always over politics. Respectfully submitted.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Next item is the report of the interim state superintendent for the sake of time. I will put that in board read. Next item on the agenda is item P, the presentation of Michigan Teacher of the Year. We welcome Mr. Corey Rosser. Mm-hmm, Michigan Teacher of the Year, and Mr. Thomas Schultz from Region 2. He's a science teacher in Shalavoy Middle and High School in Shalavoy Public Schools. We welcome both of you to the table.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce Tom Schultz from Shalavoy Middle High School. I had the privilege, one of my privileges of being Michigan Teacher of the Year is visiting numerous districts throughout the state, especially our regional winners, and so I had the opportunity to go up, I believe it was about a week ago maybe, or two weeks ago, to visit Tom in his classroom, and, you know, it was amazing just walking in. It was very clear right away why he was Regional Teacher of the Year. You know, I got the feeling that he wasn't putting on any particular lesson to impress me, but it did nonetheless. You know, just kind of hanging out, I found myself almost like a student in his classroom, just really innovative, cool stuff. He paid me to say all this, so, no, but no, it was fantastic, and so I appreciated getting a chance to see what Tom does, so. Tom, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah, well, thanks, Dr. Carnell and board for having me. I really appreciate being here. I know, yeah, it's definitely a privilege to be able to talk with you guys. So as Corey mentioned, I am from Region 2, which is the upper half of Michigan. I'm from Shalavoy, Michigan. Originally, I'm from downstate. I actually grew up in Sterling Heights, went to Stevenson High School, student taught at Lake Orion, went to Oakland University, and also went to Michigan State University. I was going to make a joke with Dr. Pritchett because I have some family that goes to U of M, so we've got kind of both feet in either pool, but regardless, yeah, we ended up in Shalavoy. I actually worked at a camp in the summer with kids, and as you guys know, teaching is all about building relationships, and so the camp ruined me, and I realized I should stop going into anesthesia, and I think I really want to go into education. So buddy of mine and I drove around for a couple days in the middle of July, and we really thought that northern Michigan was the place to be, even though I didn't know much about it, but I was offered a job in Shalavoy and thought I would try it for a year. Been there for about 24 years, so it's been good. You'll see my wife Stacy, Joshua, Benjamin, and Michael there, and so that's my quick background story, maybe not so quick, so anyway, thanks, right here. This guy, sure, that'll work, all right. So I teach honors chemistry, forensic science, and some seventh-grade science. I've taught a lot of different things over the years, held some different positions throughout the school in regards to coaching and running robotics programs, and even do sort of an experiential learning thing with a lot of the students outside of school. We go out west and hang out in the mountains for a while, but that's kind of my background in Shalavoy.
One of my favorite parts about the experiences is getting to visit, a lot of schools are very different than mine. When I visited Tom's school, we're actually fairly similar, him being in northern Michigan. Robin's a little bit bigger, we come from a larger geographic area, but we have really similar demographics. We work with a lot of the same types of students, and you can take a look at the demographics there to see what we teach.
Yes, so I came to chat with you guys about teacher R and R, and I was going to make a joke about how, you know, we could all maybe use a little rest and relaxation, maybe ruminate on some summer vacations this evening, but of course, I'm not here to talk to you about rest and relaxation. Some of that might look like being on a beach and reading a book. For me, in the summer, it's a little bit more like mowing the lawn and listening to a podcast in the summer, but moving on, if you don't mind, we're talking about Goal 7, and that's recruitment and retention.
Yeah, and so that was a topic that was brought up today, and I definitely appreciate some of the good questions that Ms. Snyder brought up as far as what does it look like? Because my mind works that way sometimes too, where, you know, if I'm going to approach a prop, what do the numbers look like? And it's such a layered issue, and like Dr. Carnell pointed out, and Dr. Pugh pointed out, there are so many layers to it. It's not as easy always just saying, here's the number of people we're short. There's a lot of things that factor into that. You know, as I think Dr. Carnell said, sometimes you split students between this class or this class, or maybe if you're short an English teacher, you, instead of having five sections of English combined to four sections of English. So you might ask one superintendent who says, nope, we've got it covered. You see another superintendent that says, well, we really should have five sections of this class, and so unfortunately, a lot of the conversation that surrounds teacher recruitment and retention is anecdotal. You know, what do we have? What are we looking for? You know, we see a real need in schools today, the number of people that are applying for jobs in schools today. If you talk to any superintendent, they'll tell you it's a lot lesser number. We've had issues in our own district where we repost and repost positions. I've had issues with my own son where, you know, he's being taught, he was a college-bound student who's a 3.7 student, but he's being taught math by a long-term sub because we don't have somebody in that role, and so it's definitely a real issue. Another issue is you see some of these smaller rural districts that perhaps can't recruit a foreign language teacher, and they're having to deliver their foreign language education through online resources, and the person, the teacher overseeing it while doing the best they can, and they're an educator, they're not a foreign language educator, and so that's affecting the level of education they're getting. And I, you know, I hear Dr. Carnell say, you know, you've got areas of high poverty, especially high population, urban areas with high poverty that maybe aren't the most attractive places for people to go because of the resources. We're actually seeing those issues in rural areas as well. You know, you've got lesser resources, smaller schools, and if you're a school the size of Tom's, like Tom teaches three preps, he gets one prep period a day of probably around 50 minutes, so he's having to develop great lesson plans, and when you divide that up between his multiple preps, he might spend 10 minutes on honors science, 10 minutes on seventh and eighth grade science, and so a lot of times in these rural districts, they can be unattractive because of the number of different hats that you're expected to wear. You know, if you know my background, and I introduced myself last week, some of the things I do, other than just running an alternative ed, teaching an alternative ed, running the GED program, summer school program, track coach, baseball coach, basketball coach, we're asked to wear all those different hats, and so that can be difficult to attract candidates to those areas as well.
Sure, and, you know, to piggyback on that, I think, you know, when we talk about Goal Number 7, and I know you guys are familiar with that, and when we look at finding people who not only want to go into education, but we want to find people that are qualified and have a strong desire to do that, and I'm just curious, real quick, just by show of hands, how many of you have been administrators, teachers, maybe counselors in a public school building? It's, okay, yeah. I shot an email out to the staff that I work with in Shalavoy, and I think whether you're running a business, right, setting personal goals, or thinking about education, it's important to know what's your why? You know, why are you doing what you're doing? What are your motives for those things? And I just thought it was interesting to see some of the responses that we got back from our superintendent, Mr. Ritter, you know, social studies teachers, our principal, Mr. Cherryberry there, and, you know, these are the kind of responses that we want from people who want to hang out with kids, right? And, yeah, I just wanted to share that with you. Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't mean to jump.
No, that's all right.
So we're going to talk a little bit about what my school, North Branch Area Schools, our Quest High School, the alternative ed for North Branch Area Schools, some of the things we're doing in our district, and then Tom's going to talk about other things that are going on to try to promote the profession of education, and so one thing that we do a great job, I think, of in our district is we have a very good teacher mentor program, and so one thing we're working on with our teacher leadership advisory council this year is to try to come up with the best practices and a framework. So what should teacher mentorship look like? And you'll find that it looks different everywhere. You know, if I go back 20 years, I had a teacher mentor who talked to me once a month and just asked me how it was going, and let me vent, and asked me if I need anything, and that was about the extent of it. We're doing a lot better throughout many places in the state of Michigan in providing mentor programs, but we can still continue to do better. Our district does a great job of that. One thing our district's doing also is we start with starting pay that's in the top percent of our local competing districts. Now, there's trade-offs there though, right? Because we all have the same budget, and so what happens is we have a higher starting pay than other people. We move through the middle very slowly. You know, we've had districts around us comment that, you know, they love North Branch Area Schools. We do a fantastic job of training their teachers because their pay scales are higher than ours, and so we do a great job of training their teachers early on because we're attractive, and then we lose teachers to some of those districts that have some more resources. You know, we have opportunities in our school district to create programs. Our curriculum director, Amber White, does a phenomenal job of that. She allows us to create programs that are compensated, so it could be in your specific interest, your specific skill, ways to connect with students and extracurriculars, and ways that mattered us and things that we're passionate about. You know, in our district, all of our teachers have more than the minimum of contractually obligated prep time. Now, of course, that's going to look different in every district because the number of hours that I'm allowed, according to my contract, might be different than Tom's, and so, you know, in our district, we go above and beyond that because we recognize the need for that prep time. We have a great year of celebration, and I think we do it better than other districts, but, you know, when you look at those ways that we retain and attract teachers, there's definitely a lot of work to be done there if we're going to keep retaining and attracting teachers and continue our goals as a district.
Sure, yeah, and I'm going to share kind of a local story with you about what we've done in our school with students, and to be candid with you, you guys know a lot more about some of the future educator initiatives that are out there than I did in August when I submitted my slideshow to be kind of vetted and whatnot, so I thought I was inventing something brand new, but obviously, there's the explore, the launch, and the proud, or sorry, the grow-your-own programs, which I've learned more about, which are phenomenal. I want to introduce you to Logan. One of the things that I'll do with my honors chemistry students, they're typically juniors when they take the class, is I'll ask them maybe to come back next year as a TA, and so they'll come and they'll help run labs, making sure they're safe, helping kids just kind of get over the hurdles of some of the difficult concepts or topics that we're covering, and it just really gives them an experience to work with kids, try on education a little bit, and just kind of feel what that's like in regards to, you know, maybe being an educator, being a teacher. And so this is Logan. He worked last year, instead of being with, he worked with me last year, and instead of being and instead of being, uh, paired with another honors chemistry class, he actually got paired with the one seventh grade science class I'd asked because it worked with the schedule, and it was phenomenal. Um, you'll see him here. He's doing a demonstration for some of the seventh graders. Um, and this really just sparked, uh, um, just an interest in education. He really enjoyed the relationships piece to it. And a lot of those kids that you see standing in that picture preferred Logan, um, over me for, for some things. Like, can I go to the bathroom, Logan, and stuff like that? But, um, so he, uh, um, uh, he did a great job. And I guess what I wanted to share today, uh, with you guys was just how, um, you know, I, I know there's launch programs, and I know that there are, um, CTE programs for education. When I think about some of the CTE programs that we have for, uh, construction, you know, those students go and actually build a house. For culinary, they actually cater an event. And I'd love to see, um, you know, in our CTE education, uh, where those students would maybe go beyond just a Zoom instructional meeting and maybe a, um, uh, an observation. You know, students have sat in classes before, they know what that feels like. But to put them in a situation where we have some immersive mentorship and, you know, where we choose teachers that are veteran teachers, that are highly effective, they're passionate, they're experts in their field, and they just really have a strong desire to kind of mentor students like Logan. Um, I've learned that there is money. Uh, in fact, today, we heard what, $70 million?
Yeah.
Allocated towards, um, the future Proud Michigan educator initiatives. And so, um, even getting them started, um, out of high school, those first two years where you might not be taking education, education classes. But I heard there was, I think it's maybe 10 grand for that first year and the year after, and then even more money to, to come. So I guess I would just encourage you guys to continue to support, you know, initiatives like that to, um, put money in the pockets of, of students or provide stipends, uh, for, for kids like Logan.
Yeah, Mr. Schultz is doing some great things with mentorships of like Logan, for example. Um, but I see really great things happening at our college level, too. Uh, I was fortunate enough last Friday to go back to my alma mater, Central Michigan, to the Teacher Candidate Conference. And so I got a chance to speak to, I think, maybe around 150 students that were doing student teaching. And, um, I think that the level of support and mentorship they're getting is definitely far beyond what I got 20 years ago, which is great to hear. Um, the mentorship programs are, once they start teaching, are a great step in the right direction to keep those people in the field. Uh, but I do want to speak to something that Dr. Robinson had said, um, as far as that teacher stipend. Um, one thing during break that a lot of conversations students centered around was when they're getting their stipend. And so I can assure you that stipend they're getting, I didn't hear anybody talk about spring break or getting a new set of clothes or anything like that. I heard, I heard students that said, you know, I'm, my, my, uh, teacher placement is 50 miles away and my credit card bill's running up and I gotta get this stipend so I can pay this bill so I can continue to go get mentored, um, or, or work in the field as a student teacher. I heard a lot of conversations centering around things like that. And so that, that's why that stipend's so necessary. I think it's a huge step in the right direction to get young people to want to go into teaching, um, because it does support them in so many ways that are important. So I, I would hope that the state of Michigan would see the value in that and the value added to people that are going to be our next teachers, so.
Yeah, and just to continue, um, you know, as I was thinking about, how can we create programs that I didn't know existed, um, already to kind of get more students into education, whether they're, um, you know, just entering college or they're still in high school thinking about being an educator? Um, you know, I thought locally, it'd be great to be able to send kids to, to conferences, maybe that are age appropriate for them, where they can kind of wear that identity as an educator and be like, this is what it feels like to be a teacher. Obviously, create situations like this where they're working with kids. Um, and, um, uh, just locally do those types of things. And then, um, uh, let's skip that. And then regionally, um, um, kind of get to the, it's, it's kind of one and the same. But, um, you know, regionally and statewide, I, I just, you know, not knowing about these programs, uh, it kind of put me in a place of like, well, how come I didn't know about them? And, um, and, and so I just, uh, trying to find a way, um, where we can maybe also as educators sort of promote, whether it's on our, like, I have an Instagram channel with chemistry stuff called The Chemistry Life, and just kind of throwing things out there about how cool it is to be a teacher. You know what I mean? And just if there's any insights maybe that you have for me and, and ways that I can help, uh, you know, kind of spread that, uh, in, in my region or in my district. I'd love to, to know more about that as well, or we can talk after. But just doing a better job maybe of just promoting all those initiatives that are out there, the explore, the launch, the grow your own. Um, I'm, I'm pretty confident that, you know, some of the people at my school have never heard of that. And, uh, I'm glad I have now, and I'll bring that back to them. But it's neat to know that they're out there. And I just think it's a really great opportunity to bring more kids and more people into education, especially quality ones.
I think our best advertisement as educators is ourselves and the energy that we bring. You know, when I go to Mr. Schultz's classroom, I can see somebody that clearly has a joy for teaching, uh, clearly knows his students, has innovative lessons, um, loves his job. And we did hit, uh, you know, this is my 22nd year teaching. There's lulls in my career that I've hit, um, maybe due to stagnant wages or, um, just rigidness in the profession where, you know, I, I know, just looking back at my career a decade ago, when you had students asking teachers about becoming teachers, teachers overwhelmingly said, don't do it, don't go into the field. Um, and I see kind of a rejuvenation, a rebirth, um, of, of a lot of teachers like Mr. Schultz that are the reason why you should go into it, the reason why it's rewarding. Um, and I think a lot of others, when you, when teachers like Mr. Schultz bring joy to his classroom, bring his personality, have the ability to, um, to have that flexibility, to be yourself. Um, you know, that definitely certainly helps. Um, so I've been up to a lot of things as Michigan Teacher of the Year, which have been really amazing. Uh, fortunately, you may or may not know, we've got about a two-month lag time. And so we submit this about two months in advance. So two months ago, I wasn't up to a whole heck of a lot other than meeting with you guys for the first time. So, um, in the middle of July, I got to meet an amazing team of people. Uh, Kelly Cusmano has been a great mentor. And I know early on, uh, when she talked to me, she said, you know, you're gonna meet these amazing people that you're gonna be friends with for years. And I can be a little bit cynical. I'm like, yeah, I'll probably talk to them through the end of 2026, and that'll be about it. Um, but I definitely see what she means. Like, we've got, we've got a chance to create a great team. I feel really comfortable with the work that we're doing for teachers moving forward. Um, I've got the great honor to attempt the Meemec Four, uh, event, the golf outing. Um, and, uh, I've got a lot of other great, uh, great activities, great opportunities that are in future presentations that I'm really excited to tell you about. But I'm gonna save those for when we have the visuals and we can kind of get a look see because they're really amazing experiences, so. Um, go ahead, Tom.
Well, that's it. No, I just appreciate, uh, being able to talk with you. I know it's been a long day for you, so, uh, everybody. But, uh, it's, it's been good. I think it's important to be intentional and have a good discussion around important issues, so.
Thank you, Mr., yes, thank you, Mr. Ross, Rosser, and Mr. Schultz. Board members, do you have any comments or question for our Teachers of the Year? Ms. Dr. Pritchett?
Thank you. Um, kudos to the idea of having a student come back in high school to be a TA. I mean, I, I'd never even thought of that, but, uh, what a way to get them hooked into, oh, wow. Now I get to be on the other side of the whatever chalkboard. Uh, so, uh, great idea.
It's been fun.
Yeah?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Any other board members' comments or questions? Ms. Lipton?
Um, and I just, I, I love the, um, I, I've always been a big fan of sort of the train the trainer model. And so the, the whole idea of coming together as teacher, Teachers of the Year and then being able to sort of spread the information to your colleagues because you will now become the trusted sources for your colleagues, uh, in terms of looking at information. So, so just thank you for, for doing the great work.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Anyone else, any other board members? Senator Bullock, did you have a comment?
Great job.
Oh, thank you so much, sir.
All right, thank you, presenters, very much.
Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
The next item on today's agenda is Item Q, the State and Federal Legislative Update. We will now hear from Mr. Bob Wheaton, Director of the Office of Public and Governmental Affairs, along with Ms. Olivia Ponte, Legislative Liaison, Liaison for the same office. They'll provide a quick state and federal program update to you, presenters. Thank you for being here.
Good morning, everyone. I'll just turn it right over to them.
Morning, morning.
Hello, Board. Um, so the big news this month is that the governor did sign both the General Omnibus Budget and the School Aid Budget with no line item VOs in either budget. That was signed on October 7th. Uh, the House Committee on Education and Workforce met on September 24th. The committee reported out House Bills 4556 and 4557 to the House floor, where they currently await a vote. And just to refresh our memories, these are the bills that would eliminate the writing portion of the SAT and eliminate the requirement that scores show up on high school transcripts. The committee also took testimony on House Bill 4813. This bill would amend the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children to change a compact provision to refer to the children of reservists and National Guard members who are currently enlisted rather than, uh, just those on active duty. The House Committee on Election Integrity took testimony on 4588 on September 30th. And this bill would require local board members to run as partisan. MDE submitted a card of opposition for this bill along with several school groups, such as the Michigan Education Association, the Michigan Association of Student Opportunity, the Michigan Association of Secondary School Principals, School Boards, um, and then intermediate, intermediate school administrators. Um, the House Committee on Education and Workforce was previously slated to take testimony on House Bill 4922 on October 1st. But due to all of the budget happenings, that committee was canceled. So we do anticipate that committee will be back on the agenda soon. Um, and that bill, uh, when it comes to a committee hearing, uh, would allow certified teachers to serve as school librarians without the specialized preparation and training that's necessary to do the job effectively. So, um, if and when that bill does come to committee, uh, as we anticipate in the next few weeks, um, MDE will submit a card of opposition, and that is all I've got.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? All right, thank you very much. So following this update, there will be a couple of votes on candidates, bylaws, and delegates for the National Association of State Board of Education NASB conference. So. Next, I would like Dr. Robinson to provide information on the candidate and the resolution.
Thank you, Dr. Cornell. So, Board members, we received, uh, some documents earlier that gave information about the candidate. The documents are linked to the agenda for today's meeting. This candidate is the only one running for the position. And I do support the endorsement of this candidate for the position. I'd like to acknowledge that the documents indicate they are due to NASB by October 13th. Careful listener who will realize that is yesterday. Uh, Ms. Evans has confirmed with the NASB staff that we'll be able to submit our votes after today's meeting to the election process at the annual meeting, which is coming up in a week or so. So I would like to make a motion to approve the candidate, term DeJardet of Maine for the 2025-2026 Chair-elect.
Support. Thank you. All right, any discussion? Ms. Evans? Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
And, oh, motion passes.
Uh, the second NASB item is the candidate for Secretary Treasurer. Um, same, uh, language as before about receiving documentation about it. I would like to make a motion to approve the candidate, Matt Donaldson of Georgia, for the 2025-2027 Secretary Treasurer.
Second, is there a second?
Support.
Pugh? Ms. Evans? Is there any discussion? Sorry, thank you very much. Any discussion? Ms. Evans? Here we go. Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Motion passes. Back to you, Dr. Robinson.
Nope.
Me.
To you.
No.
Oh, yes, it is. Thank you, yes, it is. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Robinson. The next NASB item is the nomination for Voting Delegate for the NASB Annual Business Meeting to be held on October 29th, 2025. Dr. Pugh?
Dr. Robin, Dr. Robinson is the Michigan State Board's NASB delegate, and he is attending the 2025 NASB conference. I would like to make a motion to support Dr. Mitchell Robinson to be the Voting Delegate for the NASB Conference and Annual Business Meeting on October 29th, 2025 on behalf of the State Board of Education of Michigan. As the attending representative and our board's appointed delegate, I feel that he will well represent our state and our board, uh, at the conference and annual meeting. So I moved, uh, that Dr. Robinson be our NASB delegate at the upcoming NASB conference.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a second? Okay, in unison, I will go with Ms. Lipton. I haven't. Any discussion? Ms. Evans?
Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Motion passes. Thank you. The final item to discuss and vote is on the resolution on proposed bylaws changes for NASB. Dr. Robinson, would you please share information on this item?
Sure. Uh, attached to the agenda along with the candidates is a redline version and the proposed clean version of a resolution on the proposed bylaw changes for NASB. And I'd like to make a motion to support the proposed bylaw changes. I did have a, a very informative discussion with my colleague, Dr. Pritchett, who was much more, uh, aware of what this was about. And I think it is a solid resolution of, I think it's, it's trying to, is it trying to indeed politicize some of the work of, of the NASB organization? And I think it suits our purpose as well.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. Is there a second?
Second.
Senator Bullock? Any discussion? Ms. Evans? Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
And Snyder?
No.
Motion passes. All right, the next item is to have a motion on, to adopt the following resolution on health standards that was brought to the table this morning. Is there a motion?
Support.[1590.65]
I am not ready yet to support the changes for the health standards. I am still looking at those and researching them and making certain that, as Dr. Pew indicated during her comments, that everyone is clear that, first of all, there is a committee that will determine at the local level what sex education will be taught in that particular district, that there is a clear opt-out for parents, and that teachers will be well-trained to understand when they are teaching, what is to be taught from the standards. So I am not ready to do that yet. I'm still working that out and reading the standards myself. Therefore, I'm not ready to support this resolution because there are standards that are mentioned within the resolution that I'm not ready to make a decision on one way or the other. I appreciate staff here at MDE. The health standards, again, were passed in 2007. I can't even remember what I was doing in 2007. So we sorely need to update them. There is misinformation out there beyond belief at this point. I did a little bit of investigating at the local level yesterday and even found out that there was some misunderstandings at the local level on current practices in health education, let alone any changes that the department might recommend. So at this point, I am going to vote no on the resolution only because I'm not to that point yet.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Pew, and then to Mr. McMillan.
I am wondering if Dr. Golzinski, if she can come and just answer some questions and just really clarify some of the pieces, or do we have to wait? What I want to happen, go ahead, I'll let you.
So I'd rather this resolution, I mean, I'd rather this vote be on the resolution and not so much on the standard presentation.
Gotcha. Okay, I understand. So then I'll say that, you know, the board, we are yet considering the draft of the health education standards, and we will continue to listen. Parents are emailing us. There will be other board meetings that parents and individuals can come before us, but I do ask that parents engage with, you know, look past the misinformation and engage with facts. Again, what I want to do, and I don't have it in front of me, is that we go to page five. Let me see if I can pull it up really fast, because this just jumps out at me, and somehow it seems like we're missing this point. LEAs, and this is under Local Education Agency, LEA, and parent choice, in which a lot of what was discussed was the gender and identity terms, which, from my understanding, fall under sex education. And LEAs determine what content within sexual health instruction they will include in their health education program. LEAs are encouraged to use student and community data, parent input, and community values to determine what content will best support the health and well-being of students in their districts. Michigan is one of the top states to require parent input on health instruction. Sex education advisory boards must consist of at least 50% parent membership, and we've heard that from some of the public commenters. Somehow, there just seems to be this misleading information that is out there. I don't know if there's any way that we can better express it in maybe some forward material within the document, but it is clear to me that there are areas that parents can opt out in areas that they're saying that they cannot. This is still local control. School districts can opt out, not just parents, but school districts can opt out. We do not teach gender identity. This is about, when it gets to the grade bands where it's taught or where it's discussed, it is terms, and it's terms that children are hearing on TV, in the, with friends, on the internet. And so I just think that there needs to be opportunity for parents to get more fact-based information so that they are clear on some of the misinformation that has been spewed even from this table. So I will vote no on the resolution and look forward to voting on the standards and hearing more from parents.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Ms. Snyder. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McMillan.
I'm glad that there is confirmation that sex ed is woven into these health standards. Mahmoud V. Taylor specifically says, in the opinion, "The board may not insulate itself from First Amendment liability by weaving religiously offensive material throughout its curriculum and thereby significantly increase the difficulty and complexity of remedying parents' constitutional injuries." I'll just say from the outset, that's what's happening here. Now, there, if this board wants to go forward, there will be immense amount of money spent litigating this, and this US Supreme Court has already said that what is being done here is unconstitutional. Now, there was a claim by our president earlier that there's nothing in here that has to do with beliefs or ideology. Let me read something here. Explain how biological sex, gender identity, and gender expression are distinct concepts and how they interact with each other. It doesn't say some believe they are, it says they are. That is a belief. We are instructing beliefs and ideology. Define gender identity, gender expression, and sexual orientation. Explain how they are distinct components of every individual's identity. These are beliefs. I can't imagine, unless somebody has not, you know, has had a decent education, that they would say, "Well, those "are"s don't mean anything about belief." Those are, they're clearly beliefs. So it's a lie to say there's no beliefs of sexual, you know, content and sexual health in these standards. They absolutely are. They absolutely violate the Constitution. They absolutely will be overturned if we go forward with this, and there will be a ton of money spent in litigation. You know, that would be the thing that I would say initially in this discussion, is that we should stop here and reevaluate. There's plenty of other things in here. I mean, analyze personal and family values related to relationships, sexual behaviors, sexual content, or health. Analyze personal and family values. That's beliefs. You know, it's just, it's crazy, and I know the left and I know progressives, they try to redefine terms, and that's how they think that they can win. But, I mean, this stuff is blatant, and it's embarrassing. I feel bad for people who say, "There's, you know, disinformation and stuff." No, this is extremely clear. If you've got a fifth-grade, you know, education, you can figure this stuff out. So these people that are here, what's attempted here, and I'm not saying you all knew exactly what was going on. We grabbed this, some people, we don't even have names of who did it. There's some mysterious couple of committees of people. They grabbed Massachusetts, and they used that as the framework, and then, you know, Massachusetts is pretty left-wing. So I, you know, but I know you all probably haven't thought these through, but the people showing up and the people we're going to hear have legitimate complaints. They are not looking at something and saying, "This is ridiculous." We know that, you know, that we are required to have a credit of health and PE for graduation. You're requiring students to take this, and I, you know, if it's woven throughout here, there's nothing in here that talks about notice. So I doubt that the districts have the bandwidth to say, "Okay, on Tuesday, this Tuesday, we're going to cover these three things. Oh, and then, you know, two Tuesdays from now, we're going to cover these three," and we need to make sure we all inform everybody and we all get opt-out. I mean, I'm looking here at the MDE. It says, you know, that there has to be, in sex education, parents, legal guardians must be notified in advance every single time, the content of the instruction, their right to review the materials, their right to observe the instruction, their right to excuse their child without penalty. So you're telling me that this thing is woven throughout here, and you're gonna, you know, I just, I think it's impractical. I think it's certainly Mahmoud is, is, I'm sorry, yeah, Mahmoud is pertinent here, and yeah, I think we need to stop now. I think it's very appropriate to vote. I hope that we will get a majority to say, "Yes, we need to stop and send it back, make some, maybe some changes to 2007, but not this." I mean, we're going from 13 pages to over 50 pages, and a lot of it is left-wing ideology, and it's just, it's inappropriate, and, you know, it erodes the trust. You guys think, "Oh, no, funding is so, you know, there's not that much funding going to education." This is going to only make it so parents want to remove funding from education. I mean, this is the kind of stuff you're trying to put through and force down these kids' throat. It's insulting, and you saw some of the people who, you know, had really good, you know, their presentations, they spoke with passion. I'm looking at the emails, there's like no form emails. You know, these are all, I mean, I'm looking at hundreds of emails, 99% are opposed, and I don't, they're not formed, these are people speaking from the heart. And, you know, this has woken, you know, awoken quite the mama bears around the state, and it's only begun the way this is going out, so I will stop for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder.
Thank you. I know what I was doing in 2007. I had just delivered my oldest, who's now in college, and I'm very grateful that I raised him during a time that there wasn't confusion about who really was the primary authority in his life from the perspective of molding and cultivating his identity, because when that changed, it changed practically overnight. And what I find here at this table, you know, there's this continual reference to misinformation coming from this table, very individuals from this table, right? This continuous coming back around to that concept of misinformation and lies, and, you know, even something that our president said during her comments was hollowing out of resources, right? When you know you have a Supreme Court opinion that is very clear about weaving something throughout an entire curriculum, throughout a grade span, you know, speaking out of both sides of your mouth and saying, "These aren't even standards, these are a framework." No, these are health education standards slash framework, right? So we're all supposed to be disarmed because you want to use, like, framework, and we'll just ignore the fact that it says standards. You want to hollow out resources, then hand local education agencies standards that they actually can't follow by law. That's what you're about to do, because there is a very distinct difference between health education, health education credits required under MMC and MCL and sex education law in Michigan. It's very clear what health education is defined as and what sex education is defined as. And just to go back to one of our previous presentations this morning on computer science standards, okay? If you turn to page eight, it says statutory support requirements. Computer science courses must meet the following criteria. A, meet or exceed standards adopted by the State Board of Education that you've got it, the Department of Education, has drafted. So we understand that that's the process of adopting standards. So, you know, it makes me think, too, about the politicization of education. Where exactly is that coming from? Is that coming from the State Board of Education? Because none of us drafted these guidelines. We're sitting here arguing about them. We're sitting here deciding, are these the best standards for local education agencies? And we have to use the intelligence that we have to understand whether or not they are or they are not, which is what this resolution is. So, okay, Ms. Pew, you said stay focused on the facts. That's exactly what this resolution is. It takes each standard in the health education standards that the department has developed according to MCL and says, "Are these statutorily okay? Is this acceptable?" And what this resolution says today is, "Do we believe it's acceptable? Are we capable of reading Michigan-compiled law and deciding whether or not the health education standards they've drafted actually comply with the law?" Here's what it says. It says that health class standards and curriculum must be shaped in accordance with MCL 388, period 381-388-385. So if you see those MCLs in those sections, it sets the framework for how health guidelines for schools may be promulgated and adopted under legislative oversight. Critical health problem education programs enlist the following topics as the basis for comprehensive education curricula in all elementary and secondary schools. It includes the following topics: drugs, narcotics, alcohol, tobacco, mental health, dental health, vision care, nutrition, disease prevention and control, accident prevention, and related health and safety topics. Nowhere in our statute does it promulgate that MDE is welcome to create health education standards that has sex education, which is also defined in the sex education laws, under that MCL. Weave it throughout health education standards that you then ask local education agencies to figure out which ones they want to pick and choose from. So in fact, that is not the law, and you are, in fact, breaking the law by saying, "LEAs, let's muddy the waters, let's hand you these health education standards and see what you can do with it. See which parts of the law you can break and whether or not somebody will come and sue you for it, and then whether or not the money you're about to spend on those lawsuits instead of literacy efforts in those local school districts is the right thing to do." We know darn right well this is wrong. And what really offends me, and again, this is just initial comments, what really offends me is this idea, when we tell people who come here and give public comment, or people who are registered online and may or may not have the opportunity to give public comment, or people who are on social media or wherever they're at looking for information, that they're not intelligent enough to read that MCL, too, that we are expected to read before we pass guidelines like this, right? They are intelligent enough to see that there is Michigan-compiled law that very clearly separates health education standards and sex education standards, and that the Supreme Court has now spoken on it as well. So what we do next is absolutely intentional. It's not misinformation, it's not rooted in lies, and if you really don't want to hollow out the resources, then think twice before you do this. And that's what this resolution is about. Take these standards that are absolutely breaking the law that the legislature refused to pass, because, by the way, it probably didn't pass legislative analysis for them because they know the difference that we should know here, too. So that's, that's it for now, but, I mean, I would argue this is a bureaucratic body that's essentially going rogue and taking power that they have absolutely none of, no authority to impact policy and create conflict and chaos in local education agencies that we actually have the power to stop if we so choose.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any other board members? Ms. Lipton.
Thank you. I just want to make a comment on the various references to the Supreme Court opinion. Mahmoud, I think I might be the only attorney at the table, although I'm not a constitutional attorney. I am pretty well-versed in reading cases and extracting precedent from those cases. And Mahmoud, although a fairly consequential opinion, is still based on a certain set of facts that the Maryland School Board and the Maryland District was facing. And it does, when it talks about the interweaving, it was really based on the way that the curriculum was being delivered. So it was very, very specific to a particular curriculum that the district had, was using. And I would just reiterate, I think what, I assume what all of us know, and that we as a state board, the MDE as a department, and frankly, even our US Congress, although oftentimes they don't necessarily follow their own statutes, do not have the ability to dictate curriculum. And particularly in Michigan, where we pride ourselves being a local-control state, I do think it's important for people to understand the difference between the authority of setting standards according to statute and the delivery of curriculum, which, number one, is what Mahmoud was dealing with, and number two, in Michigan, I think we're all very, very proud of the local-control nature of our curriculum selection and delivery.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Any other board members comment?
Quickly.
Senator Bullock.
What I'll say is, is that, much like Member Pritchett, I'm obtaining more information about this in general, but I've also heard, you know, some things that are ridiculous at the table. Some things are factual, some things are perception. I've heard the Democrats be blamed for this several times, but I've also heard the state rep who came this day, and Member Snyder say that it didn't get voted up in the legislature, which was all Democratic at the time. So if we're going to say, "Don't play political games," stop playing political games and really learn the actual factual information before you just start throwing out rhetoric, because rhetoric gets dangerous. And, well, I'll look forward to gaining more information and so that we can have a more adult conversation about how this plays out moving forward. So I digress.
Thank you. Senator Bullock. Any other board members? Dr. Pritchett?
I'd like to call the question and make it clear that we are not voting on standards today. This is just on the resolution introduced by Board Member Snyder this morning.
There's been a call for the vote.
I think you had already, he had already raised his hand before she did that.
Well, it doesn't matter who raises their hand, it's who was acknowledged, so.
Ms. Evans.
Just a vote to...
On the resolution, to pass the resolution.
No, it's a vote to shut down discussion anymore. It's a call to question, and then if a vote, okay. We're voting to shut down discussion any further.
Bullock?
No.
You're voting to shut down discussion.
To shut down a discussion? Yeah, sure, vote to shut down a discussion. We've talked about it at length, and we've got some more folks on the line who want to talk about it.
Lipton?
On the resolution?
No, to...
No, I think we're not calling the question.
You're not calling the question.
Right, so it's Judy asked to call the question.
She called the question, I voted yes. Next person.
On the resolution, to pass the resolution?
No, it's a vote to shut down discussion anymore. It's a call to question. And then if it, vote, okay. We're voting to shut down discussion any further.
Bullock? You're voting to shut down discussion?
To shut down a discussion? Yeah, sure, vote to shut down a discussion. We've talked about it at length, and we've got some more folks on the line who want to talk about it.
Lipton?
No, to... You're on calling the question.
She called the question, and I voted yes. The next person.
And then this passes, and we vote on the, but there's no more discussion.
Right.
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
And Snyder?
I would say we should have listened to public comment earlier, and we shouldn't be shutting discussion down, so no.
Thank you. Motion passes.
All right, Ms. Evans?
This is on the resolution. Bullock?
No.
Lipton?
No.
McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
No.
You?
No.
Robinson?
No.
And Snyder?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, the next item is a motion to adopt the resolution on Invest in Michigan Kids. It was read into record, and I will turn it over to anyone who wants to make the motion. Dr. Robinson, is there a second? Ms. Lipton, thank you. Any discussion?
Wait, this is on, I'm sorry, this is on...
The Invest in Michigan Kid, the second resolution.
Well, yeah.
Mr. McMillan?
I would say that, you know, if this proposal passes at the ballot box, you know, we'll be significantly higher than neighboring states tax-wise that we're competing with. Michigan will now, at their highest rate, be 9.25. Illinois, 4.95. Indiana, 3. And Ohio, 3.5. We will be at the rate of 9.25, the fourth-highest tax rate in the nation. And that the proposal would really impact job providers and business owners more than this rich component claimed to be targeting. 14,000 small businesses would be affected. 77% of all entities hit by this tax would be small businesses. And it really is opening up Pandora's Box. We have a state, the Constitution prohibits graduated income taxes. So now, by allowing this surcharge, you know, you're basically doing a graduated income tax. And politicians will start finding other ways and other reasons to circumvent the Constitution instead of treating everybody equal. So I think this is bad. And not to mention, I mean, you know, and maybe this is the purpose. I mean, obviously, California is seeing the effect of taxing the rich. I mean, the people, they're leaving in droves. And when you do that in Michigan, you know, it's not going to be a net increase in taxes. People will leave the state. And, you know, I mean, so many of the entrepreneurs, the business owners, they understand a hostile business environment when they see one, and they will leave. And so that's not going to help anybody here in the state. So I, but I think to some degree progressives want kind of those that are richer to leave and have people dependent on the government, but...
Thank you, Mr., I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Ms. Snyder?
I would just say that when we consider addressing issues in funding public education, you know, I've tried to bring to the table before the conversation of exactly how much of our tax dollars go to the federal government just to be filtered through bureaucracy to get back to us. And by the time it gets to kids in classrooms, it's dwindled down to like 8% of what we really send to the federal government. So we've talked about, you know, this idea of, you know, layoffs of bureaucrats that really aren't enriching students in the classroom through the Trump administration, but that would return more money than what something like this would do. And something like this would actually harm our economy in a way that you really, it's irreversible. So if you want to grow a tax base that can support a healthy education system, then you want to grow the environment where small businesses and individuals can flourish. It's not what this is. This proposal's essentially an added insult to inflation, labor shortages, high mortgage interest rates, and a cost of living that's generally out of reach without the use of credit and debit for the average person. So over time, Michigan has had to continuously balance the funding deficit associated with decreased population, thereby K-12 enrollment. This proposal would accelerate population loss, therefore further impacting public education funding. Take a look at what data shows that Michigan lost 20,000 residents to other states in 2023. That's double than what we lost in 2022. And most often, that was to low- or no-income tax states like Florida, Ohio, Texas, and Indiana. So we know this policy is not going to keep Michiganders. It's not going to attract people to move to Michigan. So every family that leaves takes their tax revenue, giving, spending businesses, and young students essentially with them, ultimately harming the ability to rebuild a thriving economy, which is really what we need to be doing. So when you think about the disagreement on this particular resolution, it's not a disagreement on having a healthy education system and funding it, but rather how you go about that and how policies really, truly impact other areas that we really need to focus on in Michigan.
Ms. Snyder? Any other board members? Ms. Lipton?
So I think that this particular initiative, number one, if it were to pass, I think would probably be a really good example of the voice of the people coming together. Right now, they're in the election signature, and then it is going to go on the ballot, and people will have a chance to vote on it. So I think that the will of the people voting in is really, I think, a very, very robust process that we have in Michigan in terms of ballot initiatives. And in terms of, you know, the arguments about increasing taxes therefore will result in people leaving the state. I mean, it's an interesting theory. It's more in the realm of correlation rather than causation. But if you really want to talk about tried and true rigorous research and looking at true causation of population up and down, I mean, there's some really good studies that there's really a multitude of factors that cause population shifts. So like I said, it's an interesting theory in terms of whether tax rates cause demographic shifts, but it's really, it shifts, but it's really more in the realm of what I would call correlation rather than causation that people can really rely on in terms of, you know, making an informed decision. So, and then lastly, I do think that we had a really interesting discussion around this table today regarding sufficiency of funding and actually legislative shifts out of the School Aid Fund and the enormous pressure that is put on the School Aid Fund when the legislature, since 2009, I believe, began this journey of using the School Aid Fund and, you know, whether you call it raiding it or shifting it or what have you. And so I think that this is really a proposal that's rather elegant in terms of sort of dealing with sort of the fiscal cliff that we have faced. And we know how the legislature deals with it by shifting these funds. And that does have a really important and direct impact on how we can fund, fully fund K-12 schools, so.
Thank you, Ms. Lipton.
Dr. Pugh? Or are you ready for the vote? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All right.
Ms. Evans? Bullock?
Yes.
Lipton?
Yes.
McMillan?
No.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Robinson?
Yes.
And Snyder?
No.
Motion passed.
Just for the record, I will be listening to the online comments as I'm heading.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, board members, fellow board members, for your flexibility.
Safe travels. Dr. Pritchett? All right, we'll go back to the online public comment to listen to those who are online. There are currently 19 in the queue.
Hello, caller, can you hear me?
Hello, yes.
Hi, if you could please state your name and where you're calling from, you may begin your three minutes of public comment.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Danielle Droth, and I am a licensed social worker living in Ypsilanti. I'm calling to express my strong support for the proposed Michigan Health Education Standards Framework. As a social worker, I was grateful to see that this draft of the health standards reflects trauma-responsive practices and has updated content to align with current best practices for teaching health education, particularly with respect to content topics like substance use and balanced eating. Health education connects to deeply personal aspects of our students' lives, and it is critical that the standards...